Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. Call the meeting to order at 8:35 PM. For safety reasons, we cannot have people standing in the doorway. You'll have to clear, find a seat. There's some seats up here, there's four, there's three over there. By order of the Fire Department, and we have the President of the Fire Department sitting here, so we have to comply.
We'll need more chairs than we need in America.
Please rise for the final.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Mayor Crankjack?
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Superintendent of DPW?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. We're all present, Mayor.
Thank you. Could you please also read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the Municipal Clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the Municipal Clerk.
Thank you. At the 6:30 caucus meeting, most of you were not here, but we had a special session with students from our upper school observing what we refer to as the Englewood Cliffs Student Government Project, Mayor and Council for the day. We had Honorary Mayor Brandon Lee, Honorary Councilman Aske Meta, Honorary Councilman Jackson Jeffrey, Honorary Councilman Lance Bay. So we turned the meeting over to them for about half an hour. They did a very nice job. I wish more people saw them in action. And we did give them a homework assignment at the end, which was to come back to us by April 30th with a list of five things to make Englewood Cliffs the best town in New Jersey. So I appreciate the assistance given to me by Lizette Duffy in organizing that and the teachers and administrators at the North Cliff School.
You're welcome. Mayor, we discussed in caucus changing two resolutions. May I read them out loud, the two changes?
Yes, please.
Okay, and that is Resolution 1866 for dollar amounts that are being changed. The $15,000 is being changed to $8,500 for past work, and the $5,000 will be not to exceed for future work. So we're just changing the $15,000 to $8,500. And Resolution 71, it stated in item number five that the Mayor, the Borough Administrator, Catherine Steinell, will sign paperwork. We're removing the Borough Administrator's name, Catherine Steinell, and just leaving it as Borough Administrator. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to make a second request to the gentlemen standing in the doorway. I need you to sit down and get out of the doorway, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. I just need to make an addition, add a resolution. I just need to add a resolution. I'm going to be making a motion to request that the Borough Clerk immediately go out to advertise for the position of Borough Administrator. The assistance of, I think we had an ad previously, but she needs assistance in modifying that anyway to work before I'll tell you to get that done.
So I'll read, I'll add it and read it aloud.
Thank you very much, General. So I don't think we have to do this for public person, but I'll do it. Now, anyway, I'm making a motion to add Councilman Park to Personnel Committee with your permission.
I can do that.
You can do it now if you want.
Anybody second?
Make a motion to do that.
Is that your appointment, Mayor?
It's my recommendation.
Do we have to vote?
Well, look, I don't want to force someone to be on a, listen, I don't want to, I don't want to force someone to be on a committee, but I thought that would be something that you would want to do.
Yeah, she's good enough.
You all right with it?
You just go point at Mark Park, Councilman Park.
Huh?
I heard Councilman Park.
No, you.
Okay.
So to, that's fine.
We did it last year.
To clarify, we always had three individuals as a personal committee.
Yeah. Yeah, it's okay. Sorry if I wasn't clear.
All right, so who made, you made the motion and who seconded?
Councilman. Do we have to vote?
That's why, yeah, it's not to be jerk, but because do we have to vote if it's your appointment? It's just your appointment.
We voted to agree to work.
It's with consent of the council.
Okay, just point a fire button.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yeah.
Okay.
O.?
Yes.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome to the committee. Let's approve minutes from caucus and regular meeting of February 14, 2018, also known as our Valentine's Evening Meeting. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is the report of our Labor Attorney, Mark Lutterman. It's a personnel matter involving Chief Michael Chaukey.
The microphone, please.
The microphone.
Jason? Yes, Chief, second of the day.
Just a minute.
Just for the council's edification, this matter is confidential that Mr. Rutterman is going to speak about, so we are not going to entertain too many questions. I'm sure Mr. Rutterman will tell you if he can't answer questions. And the reason it is being done currently at open public session is because Chief Chaukey received a notice and requested that it be held in open. My understanding is it's just a report.
The Burton County Prosecutor's Office conducted an investigation concerning a particular complaint, of which I'm not going to go into any detail for the same reasons that the Borough Attorney specified. I spoke on the phone today with Burton County Prosecutor's Office about this investigation, and the Assistant Prosecutor who I spoke to, who's also an AG, reiterated the importance, in particular from the Attorney General Guidelines, about the confidentiality of this report and everything contained in it. This report was filed, it was sent to the Borough on February 20th, and it was sent to me as the Labor Attorney on February 23rd to review the prosecutor's report and make a specific recommendation to the Mayor and Council. I have done so, I've reviewed the records, I've listened to the computer disc tapes and everything pertaining to the investigation, and it is my recommendation, after having thoroughly reviewed the documentation, that the Mayor and Council, as the appropriate authority, do not proceed with any further action with respect to the matter that was investigated by the Prosecutor's Office.
Is that the end of your report?
I like to be succinct.
And there is no need for a vote?
There is not unless, unless the Council wants to proceed with charges. And it's not my recommendation that they do so.
Okay.
Everybody good?
I have a question, though. Because obviously, as far as I'm hearing about it.
Can you turn your mic on?
Sorry. When was the complaint made, or when did the investigation occur?
The investigation occurred over a several-month period in the Prosecutor's Office during the fall of 2017.
Can you give me the date as to when the actual complaint was brought?
I honestly don't know when the date, I know the day that they met with people and took reports and took statements from them. It's my understanding that the report was filed somewhere around the middle of September 2017.
No questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, the report and all of its contents will remain confidential.
Yes.
If you have the originals of the discs, they should be returned in confidence to the Borough Clerk's office. If you want to do that now, or however you want to do it?
I have anticipated that, and this is the original report, which was received, and I'm handing it to the set. It contains the original discs, as well as the investigation report and the letter that came from the Prosecutor's Office to the mayor's office.
Three discs, correct?
I believe there should be two discs.
So then, Madam Clerk, I would ask that you seal that and place that in a locked cabinet under your control?
Actually, there's four discs.
Okay.
Mark? Four discs.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rutterman.
Yeah, I have another question, but I, I'm, thank you for your recommendation, however, I, you know, we're voting on something, we're not voting on something.
We're not, we're not voting.
Okay, but aren't we, as council, entitled to see what's in that envelope?
No, it's an internal affairs investigation.
It is an investigation. As the appropriate authority, if you wish to review the document in confidence, you can go to the Borough Clerk and request to look at the information. The way it's being handled in this way is to ensure confidentiality, because if any of this appears in any one of the various sources of social media that we're all familiar with, or any other source, litigation will ensue, even potential criminal charges, and I want to avoid any, any impropriety at all. Most of you I've never met before, I'm very much of a straight shooter, and I give my recommendations based upon my 39 years of prosecuting cases like this, and that's what, what my recommendation was.
So I can go to the Borough Clerk?
Excuse me, excuse me, before you opine that, the Borough may have a difference of opinion. It is a confidential personnel record, and it is a confidential investigation record, subject to the guidelines of the Attorney General. So Ms. Park, Councilwoman Park, if you do want to review that, please consult with the Borough Clerk, who will consult with me, and I will specifically look at the Attorney General Guidelines to determine if your review is allowable.
We're, we're the council people that, this is ridiculous.
Just get out of the way.
I fully understand, but there are only four circumstances under which this type of investigation can be reviewed under the Attorney General Guidelines.
You say this kind of investigation, so you're aware of the investigation. You're aware of it. You know what's happening, I don't know what's happening.
No, I'm sorry.
This type of voice.
It is, it is a confidential investigation, as well as confidential personal records, personality records. I'm not going to make a decision that you can or cannot review that right here and now, because I do not have the Attorney General Guidelines in front of me. With all due respect to Mr. Rutterman.
I have them in front of me.
Very good.
Page 42 of the Attorney General Guidelines, there are four exceptions to releasing this information. If administrative charges have been brought against an officer and a hearing will be held, a copy of all discoverable material should be provided to the officer and the hearing officer before the hearing. Since I've recommended we don't, that's not covered. If the subject officer, agency, or governing jurisdiction has been named as a defendant in a lawsuit arising out of the specific incident covered by the internal investigation, a copy of internal investigation reports may be released to the attorney representing the subject officer, agency, or jurisdiction.
Doesn't apply.
There is no litigation, upon request or just, or direction of the county prosecutor or the Attorney General. I spoke with the Attorney General, he wants to, excuse me, the Prosecutor's Office and the Attorney General, they said no, and the fourth exception is upon a court order. So none of the four exceptions apply, which is why I am insisting upon confidentiality.
And you're deferring to my decision at this moment.
That's correct.
Certainly, if a court order is, is returned, ordering the review by any individual council member, but with all due respect, we, since I have been Borough Attorney, we have not shared IA or personnel records to the council members as a whole. And the Borough Administrator has generally been handling personnel records that are confidential.
I have a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's something that you could answer, but how did this internal investigation end up at the county? Is it something that the person, the petitioner, or the complainant in this case, you know, brought it up to the county, or how did it end up there?
It's because the investigation involved a particular individual that it goes to the county prosecutor, it cannot be done internally.
Cannot be done locally. It must go to the Prosecutor's Office.
There was no discretion, there doesn't like somebody just ran to the Prosecutor's Office for the hell of it. They had to go to the Prosecutor's Office to do this type of investigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, everyone.
Can I turn it to the microphone?
It's on.
Okay, go ahead.
You didn't hear me?
No, no, it's on.
Okay, we had correspondence from the Burton County Utilities Authority.
Hold on. This, McMorro, Councilwoman McMorro.
They come back in. Can I motion to open to the public?
Hold on.
Oh, hold on a second. What's that?
I just want to know, the director, did anybody else have any conflicts with this matter? Besides myself? Mr. Attorney?
I'm not aware of any other conflicts.
On the council, nobody else have any conflict?
I'm not aware of any other conflicts.
I probably know, we don't know what's in the plate.
I don't know, I'm just asking the question, does anybody think they have any other conflicts? That's all.
Microphone. If everybody thinks no, then it's town.
Okay, let's have a motion to open to the public.
Not correspondence?
We did correspondence.
Oh, we did.
Burton County Utilities Authority was the only piece of correspondence on the agenda, and I need a motion to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
And so any member of the public is free to come up to the microphone after I recognize you by raising your hand. State your name and address, please. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes. I'm sorry, can you just clear the doorway, please?
Hi, I have a question for the Borough, Lynn Leaskos, 10 East Street.
I'm sorry, what's your last name, miss?
Leaskos.
Okay.
I have a question for the Borough Attorney. You said that the council as a whole did not get information about whatever litigation thing is going on.
No one on the council.
No, you meant to say no, not as a whole.
No individual.
Not one person, not anything.
Correct.
That's all I want to know.
You're, you're referring to the matter we just decided.
Correct.
I mean, didn't decide, because we had no vote. No one received it, except the Borough Administrator and the Borough Labor Attorney.
And how secure is where Lizette's going to have to put this, so that it's not in any way putting the Borough in a position to be litigated against if the, whatever's in there gets out.
I understand, my understanding, and I certainly trust the Borough Clerk, is that she has control of locked cabinetry in locked rooms, and I am sure she will be sure and ensure that this will remain secure.
How many keys are available for the door and the lock?
We don't discuss, we don't discuss.
Lock locks, whatever it is.
We don't discuss building security in the public.
I get, I get that.
Okay, Open Public Meetings Act allows us to discuss such items enclosed, we're not going to discuss that in public.
My concern is, you know, sometimes, like, the keys to the safe, that, and car land, there were two keys, they didn't know there were two keys, and they got out and killed people, you know? That is just concerning, it's more than one key.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
There are seats up here if you'd wish to sit down, I just can't have you stand in the doorway. There's a seat there. Yes. One of the callers. One of the callers.
Mike's on.
Thank you, Mark. Hello? Can you do it now?
No. Take a, no.
I don't see a cloud.
No, it's cloudy.
Speak louder, is that better? Okay. Okay. I have a few budget questions, please come in, Jeff. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. The Resolution 1863, the appointment of a property maintenance inspector, is this in our, I'm going to say our current budget, which wouldn't be 2018, but 2017?
It'll be in the budget.
It'll be in the budget, thank you.
Can I just add to that, though? Last year, we had one person that was wearing many hats. This year, we have a few different people, so I can't, if you're asking, are we increasing the budget? I don't think it would be fair for us to actually state that, I haven't looked at it. But just so you know, there was one guy who got different hats and different stipends or payments.
So you're saying a part of that is being removed?
No.
I mean, I think it's hard to discuss the 2017 budget, other than whether acquisition was there or not, because I just received the numbers, so I'll know if it's better.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
What was one regarding what happened?
Yeah, and when you'll see, you'll see in, in the budget what we're going to do this year. But in the budget last year, it's one of the.
Are we going to do public meetings regarding the 2018 budget, that we'll be able to participate? There will be. There will be? There will be. Okay. Resolution 1866, this is not a budget question, this is more of a question, I don't think litigation was settled, and I'm not understanding why we're continuing to set aside funds.
It's not settled.
It's not settled, okay.
And it's continuing.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 1861, general capital being spent of 5.7 million or change, is that just normal procedure? And is it coming out of the capital fund? So I'm trying to confuse this with that score. We'll get back to you on that.
What was the, 1861, payment of claims?
Payment of claims, yes, out of the general capital fund, 5.7 million. This panel could not be here this evening, so I will find out. Resolution 1862, I noticed that there's a decrease in the cost that was originally a fully funded maintenance household, I'm happy to see that, but I'm just wondering where, what was the leader from scope of work to cause a $91,000 reduction in costs?
Mr. Attorney, do you have the answer to that question?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In 1862, we had allocated money for paving contractors for, it appears to be.
We change order.
And sports, and basketball, and we have now a change order number five.
Final.
Which is final, we had two to four, which increased the contract price, and now this particular change order decreases it by $91,000. Was there scope of work deleted from the contract? What are we not getting in that, the contract now was reduced by $91,000?
I have to consider the engineer, but I believe the question is going contract quantities.
There's a question, I don't expect that, I mean.
There's your rather.
Congressman's not there, so I'm assuming that. We'll find out for you. We have the answers, but.
What I'll do is, all your questions, I will get answers for, email you, and blind copy the council, so they know as well.
I can have the refund because it's important enough.
No, no.
I'm not going to speculate, we'll find out.
I'll find out, and I will email you. No Oprah needed.
Is this something that we bonded, or is this money that's sitting in our capital account? So do we have that $91,000 sitting in capital, available for other, okay, it's a question, do we have that $91,000 sitting in the capital account? Okay, moving on to Resolution 1864, same, same situation here, removing money from certain line items, various line items, to legal services and other insurance. I think it would be fair to assume that that's because we have litigation that we've drawn all the budget on, and the thing with the insurance and the deductible. My question is, the road repairs and maintenance has a big chunk of that money that's coming from those line items. And is that because the work wasn't done for the road repairs, and so what more work is deleted from the scope that we have that kind of money sitting on those line items to move?
Sometimes, there's this extra money, it doesn't mean that the work wasn't done, but any time that we appropriate money to a line, the superintendent can explain, we always, we, we would need to have extra and not enough, because if you don't have enough, then you can't consider.
That's about $8,000.
So, you know, as I said, the superintendent, those questions would be directed to him.
Right, so the question is, did we delete scope of work again, or?
Directed towards the market.
Right, so I guess Lizette made the list.
I am, yeah.
Is this insurance also removing money, I assume enough to cover the retirement fees, or for some reason, we were saving $24,000. And the social security system, again, I'm not sure why we have excess of $24,000 sitting in that money item, that's being transferred to legal and insurance. So if I could just get both answered? Sorry, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions left. This is Resolution, I will be answering that one. The Resolution 1870, I know it's got a lot of money, but I'm just curious why the insurance company isn't covering expert witnesses in Western.
That's not, that's in the litigation, where the Borough is suing on its behalf and its citizenry.
Okay.
Against an engineering firm.
So insurance is not involved?
Insurance is not involved, correct.
And just so you know, it's an existing expert witness that we have, we had him last year as well, we're just.
I just want to know if there's something the insurance company is covering or not? Perfect, thank you. Go on. Yes.
Hi, can I just present a picture to.
If you can, just state your name and address, and then we'll take that, thanks.
Okay, so my name is Stoyan Lee, my address is Monmouth, by Pershing Road, and I attended a meeting about how to, how to real prevent cars from out of town from speeding on Pershing Road and on other roads where out of town cars pass. And I'm wondering whether there has been any development, because I have not seen any police activity or any other activities. The pictures that I just gave you, there was a major accident on the Pershing Road.
I'm sorry, can you just, Chief, can you just have your conversations outside, please? Because it's disruptive, please? Can you have your conversations outside? It's disruptive, I can't hear the type. He was. Please, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No problem. So, and there was an accident where a car was speeding more than like 50 per mile on Pershing Road, and you can see from the pictures, that kind of accident should not happen on the residential street, and I really would like to ask the town, or the Borough, to implement something, some other measurement to.
Yes, I actually, after you left last month at the meeting, I complimented you, you weren't here for the compliment, but I complimented you to others, because you actually showed up, stated a problem, and you also stated a solution for us, which was the potential speed bumps that we would play on Pershing. And I had the Borough Administrator price out different options for speed bumps, so it is in process, she was coordinating with the Police Department, and it takes a little while to finish, but she told me that, she gave me the budget of what it would cost, and we're just trying to figure out what the best solution is. So I appreciate your problem and your potential solution, and we did listen to you, and we are following up.
Yeah, thank you so much. So can I expect something will be done, like, within a reasonable time?
I am hoping, I'm hoping, I'm trying.
I just want to share about this, this accident, because really, this kind of damage should not happen, like, all over any residential street, and that happened like a week after I came to the meeting last time, and. And, and I hope with these bumps, like you will really reduce this kind of accident and reduce all the cars.
Yeah, we're hoping.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else raise your hand and be recognized? Yes, you didn't raise your hand. No, you go, you go. No, you raised your hand, I recognize you. He didn't raise his hand, I can recognize him. I was told that it's dead. From our borough administrator, speaking with the police department traffic division.
Is there any reason why it's there?
I could find out more reason for it, I'm not, I don't know if I could tell you what it is right now, but-
Why, if it's from the administrator in writing?
Part of the reason, as I understood it, was it would just reroute people to other streets.
And give me a break after fifty years.
Right.
Give it to another street.
Right.
It's very simple. Okay, but I want it in writing, if you don't mind.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's number one. Number two, I've been coming every month and asking the council, as well as the mayor, and you're all, you all know what's going on. What's happening with the properties by the side of Cafe Italiano, which all goes up, no numbers on the house, cars parked like a junkyard on your back. Seat taters, unpaid. I have the, the, the code. Now, now you're telling me you're hiring somebody to give some old lady a ticket? I'm not cutting her grass.
I'm not cutting her-
I'm not cleaning her gutter, and this is going on now for fifteen years. And I went to blaming you on this, there's something before you.
We, our property maintenance official has been fining that property. You don't see fines, they don't light up, they don't get posted on phone poles, but they've been fined. And we're trying to find a solution.
It's called a tow truck, tow the cars out and take the seat taters out.
It's, it's private property, we're-
Really? They did it in Hackensack?
Well, we're not Hackensack.
Well, then, you know something? Maybe we should look at other towns.
Right.
And maybe pick up-
Well, we have the property maintenance official dealing with it, and it may not be as fast as you'd want it to be dealt with, but there, there are other issues in town as well that they're dealing with. I know they've been fined, and I don't know if the fines have been paid or not.
I'm not really interested in fines, I'm interested in something to be done. Your, 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 your code says that it's supposed to look in uniform order. Putting up a building is not uniform. Putting a number on a building is not out of the question. I don't understand it. What are you filing?
Well, so, if I could, I don't know anything in particular, but what I can say generally is, the way property maintenance works, and how a municipality gets relief from property owners that may not be following our code, is in fact to issue summonses that carry with them fines, and in fact, if they aren't paid, end the violation fix, they're given a deadline usually, then it can be brought further, like to the county board of appeals. It can also be brought possibly to the local municipal court. So I don't know where in the process this is, but we can't, we can't just-
You know, councilor, sounds great, it sounds great.
Okay, I understand. We have to follow the law too.
I'm glad you're following the law.
We have to.
Then let's do it.
Okay.
Let's not just fine, let's correct.
Okay, I understand.
There has to be, there has to be a correction somewhere.
Okay. The borough doesn't undertake repairs, sir. What the borough can correct is to continue to follow the code as to this particular property owner. We, we're not authorized to expend money to fix the problem at the site. We aren't authorized by the law to take the actions.
I'm not asking the town to repair his building.
Okay.
I'm asking the town to remove the junk, so we don't have to look at a junkyard like the South Bronx. When you don't have a seat tater full of equipment.
My instructions to our property maintenance people was do everything necessary or appropriate to make that property owner comply, okay? And I don't know if you're familiar with how things work in municipal government, but I can give an order like that, and then I somewhat have to hope it gets done.
I understand that.
And now you're complaining again, and I will give that order once again. But we're up against a lot of things in this town, when you tell people to do things that they should be doing, okay?
People we're paying them to do it.
And I don't want to trip over anybody's rights, but-
But we're paying them to do it.
Right.
They're not doing us a favor.
No, 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 no. Private landowners, private landowners still have rights, just like you did when you owned buildings, okay?
I don't say they don't have rights, I do say one thing. If they don't do it, and you give them ample time to do it, you want to give them a year? I think Ms. Moro said to me one time, she says, oh, we're gonna give them time. When I spoke to the previous, the previous guy who ran the building's apartment, he says, oh, every week he's doing something. So instead of putting up windows, he bought them the windows, so it looks like the South Bronx.
My instructions were, do everything necessary or appropriate to make this property owner comply, because I feel the same way about that property as you do, and I'm sure many people in here feel the same way. Okay?
But then there has to be an answer to something here, if nothing's happening, and it's now a year. It's a year.
Right now, I can't have you-
I never said to you that we're giving them time, tell me.
No, 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 I'm just saying, you know, when I spoke to the first inspector, he says we're gonna give a guy ample time to take it out. I understand, I'm not, I'm not paying for it for now, but instead of, instead of putting up windows, he bought them.
Okay. May, may I suggest we look at our fines and see if our fines are appropriate right now, where you're taking action? Again, I mean, I would add a zero every time, you know, it'd be like a-
You know, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just crazy. It's just, it's just a little much, because-
No, no, it's not only is it-
-you're gonna hire a guy, he's gonna give somebody a ticket, not cut their lawn.
Not only is it crazy, no, no, it's not only is it crazy, but it's frustrating also, from your side of the bar and from mine also, because I'm trying to get this stuff done.
I understand.
And for whatever reason, it doesn't happen, okay?
Listen, I come to alert you folks, because I know things happen.
All right, good point well taken, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Frankel, one sixteen Chestnut Street. I'd like to know if any provisions have been made in town for students or residents that would like to participate in the March for Our Lives in Washington DC, if any type of transportation bus would be available to anybody?
That sounds like a school board issue to make, and if, if students want to go, and they petition their principal or superintendent, um-
Well, you said you met with students this morning?
No, this evening, we had a student government sit up here.
Did they, did they mention anything about being interested in doing the March?
They didn't mention going to the March, they mentioned other things that they're doing in a positive direction for everybody.
Do you know of any towns around that would have the bus available if anybody does want to go?
I don't know, I don't know.
Because last time I spoke with you, you said you would be interested in working on some sort of common sense gun control.
Right.
And if people wanted to go there, I thought it'd be a nice idea if the town provided a bus, if they wanted to do so.
Well, I mean, I think that's a different thing, I, I agreed with you on the issue of automatic, semi-automatic weapons in the wrong hands, and, and the background checks and things like that. The bus is going to a march, I mean, I, I don't know much about it, I hear about it in the news. I think the schools will probably do something, you could organize it through them, but again, there's a lot of liability involved for a borough to be busing students down to Washington for a march.
Well, not a lot of towns are providing buses, I just thought maybe the town would.
It, it, it's really a board of ed thing, we, we can't, the board of ed has the relationship with the students, this is for, I think Friday is one of the first, there are people down there right now, the board of-
I don't know the actual march is, uh, it's twenty-fourth.
Four, okay.
It's March for Our Lives in Washington.
Okay, I understand. A board of ed responsibility, if they choose to, to provide a bus for the students to go.
So there's nothing in the works?
Nothing from this council up here, because we're not, we're not the relevant body to be deciding that, or organizing that. We reached, I reached out to the school to have student government program, so they could participate and see what municipal government's about, and, and their teachers and administrators were very supportive, and I, I think it was a very nice thing that happened this evening, and I think it was enriching for them. You could call the superintendent of schools tomorrow and ask her-
Bring up with those students that how important it would be to have common sense gun control in that area?
Yeah, I bring that up, no, no.
No?
It wasn't my place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Yes, sir, you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Downtucci, with all due respect, if you are going to comment on the procedures and, and the ma- matter of the discipline, please wait until we reach that on the agenda, because I need a clear transcript of that matter.
What I wanted to say, number one, was in response to your conversation, which was erroneous, with the attorney that appeared here on your behalf. What was sent out by the prosecutor's office was a letter dated February twentieth, which I have a copy of, he provided it to me too.
Who? Who provided you?
Brian Sinclair.
Okay.
Brian Sinclair.
Okay.
Mr. Sinclair sent this letter to me, not the documents, not the enclosures, but what they do is they send it to the appropriate authority, which is everyone here. So anyone that wants to see what is in that file is certainly able to take the law, okay?
Who's, who's copying on that letter?
Me.
So there's not, appropriate authority is not copied on that letter?
Yes, sir, but it's to you, it's to the appropriate authority, you folks, and a copy to me.
So what, what are you suggesting, that we release that letter to the council members?
No, I'm telling you, these folks should have the right to take a look at the documents that are provided, that I don't have.
Does your client want to sign a release to that effect?
To what effect? Yes, that they can look at it.
For a public release?
Appropriate authority can look at it.
You want, you want a public release, or what are you talking about?
No, I'm saying that the appropriate authority should have the right to take a look at what was enclosed.
Okay, so Mr. Downtucci, I would ask you, because there is a lot of litigation between the borough and your client, I would ask you to make that request in writing to me, and I will examine it with the mayor and council at the next available meeting. It may not be, we had a special meeting March twentieth, it may or may not be then that we would take it up, I have to see if we have to give you another rights notice, I made request to release from your client, I certainly will look at it.
It's very simple, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand.
They are the appropriate authority, and they're entitled to take a look at what was sent back from Washington.
I understand, I understand your position.
The second thing, you can hand me something, and you said, I tried to email this to you.
No, I, I called you twice, and I emailed you once. Like last week, Monday.
What did you email me?
Monday or Tuesday?
You emailed me?
Yes.
What email do you have?
Okay, sir, you know what, really, really, can you please wait till the, wait till the allotted time on the agenda for that matter, and you can make a record?
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
But I just want you to know that when you say that you're sending me something, I'm not receiving it.
No, 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 I didn't try to send that to you, sir.
I already sent an email.
I reached, I did email you, I reached out to you by email and phone, asking for you to call me or reply to me about the matter for tonight.
Did you call it?
I've ne- no, I've never received this.
No, I didn't try to send that to you, sir. It's confidential. If and when the matter is actually, that's confidential. If and when, it says confidential on it, if and when we get to the matter on the agenda, we will discuss it. All right, so, and please, please raise any issue you have, again, at the proper place and time, so that a proper transcript can, can be ordered.
The only recommendation is that everybody do the bad work.
Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Hi, Lynn Norton, nine Willow Drive. So just to confirm, I think what Mr. Downtucci was saying, that the appropriate authority is the mayor and the council, and whenever you're taking in action on the police chief, it should be done by the mayor and the council, not the mayor alone. So just confirming the appropriate authority.
Yes, thank you, we'll discuss that later on in another matter, but there is, there are other statutes and co-provisions that may vary that, and I'm not going to get into a legal battle, battle about it, thank you.
Well, we're going under that assumption that it's the mayor and the council.
You're going under that, ma'am, you're going under that assumption, you are.
I'm going under the assumptions.
I'm sure a lot of people don't agree with me.
I feel a very good representative from council giving us that information.
He's not our council, ma'am, don't confuse who he is.
The council, C-O-N-S-E-L. Okay, I was gonna thank Warren Neville for taking care of the field, plowing the walking path, it was great, it was nice to use over the weekend, when there was plenty of snow on the ground. The next thing was regarding to resolution eighteen dash sixty-six and eighteen dash seventy-two, when we're adding more money to the lawsuit. I know that Mrs. Sabori mentioned with the settlement, but my understanding that there was a court order for the govern- for the governing body or Mayor Kranjak to produce those documents, so what we're saying is you're appealing to the court order.
No, we're not.
That's what you're saying.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Well, that's what she said.
That's what I'm saying, so help me if, if I'm wrong there.
That is inaccurate, and we are not going to discuss pending litigation, thank you.
Okay, once again, another question regarding to Mrs. Sabori's comments on those budget items. Do the council members feel that they're able to vote on any of those budget items if they don't necessarily understand it, or if no one up there understood it, and they're being asked to vote on it today? I might have concerns if I was sitting up there. And lastly, this relates to messages from Mayor Kranjak. Mayor Kranjak writes in, lets me get an email dated March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. In terms of the information that you receive related to the borough, the only true, accurate, non-political and unorthodox information we're providing to our borough comes from the borough itself, or our meeting minutes, official borough emails, official borough websites, social media postings, and regular borough US email, US mail. Okay, so, then, if you want to step back on that, March second, the borough received an email from Mayor, message from Mayor Kranjak. It was based, I presume, on a, a letter from his attorney, the attorney representing him in lawsuit, I guess his brother-in-law, who mentioned something about toilet flushing. Mayor Kranjak took that and ran to town with it, who knows what was in those tapes? I've not listened to it, the sound includes toilets, well, maybe the sound includes a toilet flushing, but it's unclear, it's unknown, we do not know. I haven't listened, and then you summarize here and say, well, I never record conversations, dot, 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 I'm not pleased with the chief does, and what he's chosen to do is unsavory, wasting time, resources, creepy. And then he says, I'm willing to work with me, with, with anyone, but the chief has not been willing to do so, I, I encourage the chief to reflect what he has done. Mayor, you should know better, you have more feelings in here, there are no facts, all feelings, you're putting this out as a memo from the borough of angry bliss that is absolutely despicable, even you have stooped to a low here. This is not to be acceptable, the office of the mayor has become the laughing stock, and it's a terrible embarrassment. And my solution, since I know you like solutions, is do not use the borough email for your personal vendettas and your political agenda, thank you.
That was lovely, but it was misrepresenting the truth. The email that went out to the borough was verbatim, word for word, what was spoken up here at our February fourteenth meeting. Next, anybody else?
You said that it was just not to the borough.
Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. We have had some discussion here about people wanting information, confidential information. We haven't had any discussions about leaks of confidential information. Has some of you- As some of you may know, I am very fond of the Civil Case Room, which is a room in the Burton County Courthouse, where you can get copies of all pleadings. One of those pleadings filed by one of our police officers has a great deal of another police officer's medical records. I doubt very much that the officer whose medical records they are gave them to anyone else. And I can only imagine the lawsuit we're going to end up with, from the officers whose medical records are now all over Burton County. So I think before we have people looking at confidential files, we need to figure out how we are going to ensure that those confidential files aren't going to be disseminated, this is a funny council report, aren't going to be disseminated all over Burton County, because the taxpayers are the ones who end up paying for those lawsuits.
Yes?
Hi, Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. You know, I have to write this down, because I get emotional, and when I get old, nobody understands what I'm talking about, so. I find it very interesting that the partisan mailing sent out to the residents by Mrs. Dieter and Mrs. Fair and Mrs. Savari expressed a dissatisfaction to this administration. They blatantly ignore the fact of what the previous administration did not do for the residents of Anglicus. The sitting administration has done more in their first time in office than the previous one did in approximately 40 years. Now, there are so many wonderful things that the residents are getting from this present administration. We have Community Night Out. It's been such a success, it's an event that no matter who you are, what political side you're on, or whether young or old, can enjoy a fun-filled night with food, activities, everything. We have a great five-way run, it's another wonderful event where all the residents come out, and it doesn't matter if you're running, walking, or just standing by and watching, the children are having fun, the people are having fun. I can only say that in the 30 years that I've been in this town, it's the only time in the past few years that we've had things that actually work for all of the residents of Anglicus, not just one side of Anglicus. I'll give you an example. The only two things that were ever available to residents in this town was the police ease barbecue, where you had to pay to enter, and once you were in there, you felt extremely uncomfortable, because maybe you weren't a Democrat. Natural Light Out was held at the police parking lot, Chuck and Treats was not around when my kids were young, but I have never felt more included in a community than I have in the past few years. And I think it's a shame that we constantly are negative about a side that hasn't been around for that long. Why weren't you a little self-concerned? Forty years ago, 35 years ago, our taxes kept going up, our votes weren't being fixed. I think it's a shame that this is where we are right now. I would also like to share in the event that happened this past, a fire on my deck. It involved a tank of propane gas, and it was very scary, perhaps my house could have exploded. I have to tell you that the police officers and the volunteer fire responders were extremely professional, and I respect them individually, individually, and I don't think that anybody in this town, anybody, disrespects the police and the fire department. Regardless, we hear over and over again, okay? I think it's a disservice to people like me to have to be portrayed as a police leader or a fire chief, you know, volunteer fire department leader. That's not right, because we all respect these people, let's make that clear. Anyway, so. He's having said that. I'm really concerned about the involvement in our election last year, whereby the police unanimously endorsed Mr. Brooks and Miss O and Miss Part. For their bid for the day of council in the election, using an official police shield on their mailing, in my opinion, was intimidating to the residents to support the police and do not want to anger them. I speak for myself, and when I say that, Mr. Brooks and Miss O and Miss Part, you should excuse yourselves promoting all police matters, because of the implication that they may owe a favor to Chief Chaukey and the police officers who endorsed the senior bid to win an election. The police department headed by Chief Chaukey should not have involved themselves in an election. If Chief Chaukey and any other officer who felt that they were not being treated justly, they had other remedies at hand to express their dissatisfaction. That's all I want to say. I'm sorry that I got the booze over there, but we all need to be fair and express ourselves in a truthful way, and not what's going on right now. This is divisive, and it should stop, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Karen Dieter, 270, Albert Street. First of all, in response with one sentence to Mrs. Valari, there's something with the First Amendment. People, employees, do not give up their personal interest because they know it's always hard to go. And I caution you to read it, and perhaps read the case law regarding the personal interest.
I don't think Ms. Valari could hear what you said, I presume.
She should have spoken about her First Amendment.
We did that already, sir, sir. We did that already, sir.
David.
Put the borough property down, sir.
David, you're not welcome back here.
Put the borough property down.
Okay, I'll say it, is it working? Is it working? Thank you. I'll repeat what I said. If something in this country falls-
Can you just wait a second until the clerk is back and monitoring our recording? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, you know, she should be, she has to monitor everything.
Go ahead, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Lizette.
It's like Groundhog Day. Thank you. All right, Karen Dieter, 270, Albert Street. To Mrs. Valari, we have the First Amendment in this country, it protects the freedom of speech and the freedom of expression, and gives everyone, including all employees of the borough, the ability to exercise that right. And I suggest that you look at our Constitution, and perhaps the case law, and even the Hatch Act, before you make comments like that. Number two.
She's free to make them, right?
I didn't say she wasn't.
No, 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 not tonight.
Oh, no, okay, tonight, you stay, that's it. Number, number two. But now, it's okay, babe, don't fire him. Number two. I read the transcripts of a hearing that took place in February, which dealt with several allegations that the chief acted, conduct, and conduct. Amongst the allegations, much to my surprise, was the verbatim transcript of a conversation that took place at the prosecutor's office, between the chief and whoever was investigating him at that issue, and resulted in these hearings. Given what Mr. Ruderman said to us to get, I wonder how those verbatim items from the transcript of what happened at the prosecutor's office could have found themselves into a borough proceeding. A borough proceeding, the hearings that took place in February, which alluded and included conversations that took place at the prosecutor's office.
I am uncertain what you are speaking about, but whatever is in those, I, let's clear up the record. The February hearings that you are speaking about had to do with the chief, and they are on the agenda for tonight under new business, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And those February hearings were open to the public, because the chief requested that they be open to the public, you're aware of that, right?
Absolutely, I was.
Okay. The matter that Mr. Rutterman, the labor attorney, was here for tonight, had nothing to do with that hearing, and occurred six or eight months after that hearing.
Absolutely.
So what are you speaking about?
I'm not speaking about the matter that Mr. Rutterman was talking about tonight. I am talking about one of the transcripts from the hearings that took place, which were in public, as well as the rights notice given to the chief, which set forth the allegations from the mayor and council that caused those hearings to be held in February. So we're talking about last year. Last year, not this past February, the year of February, right? Included verbatim transcripts of an interview with the chief at the prosecutor's office. And I want to know how those became public to the mayor, or anyone else who used them in that proceeding, given what Mr. Ruderman said tonight about how a Friday cannot be public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, four seconds. Okay, number three.
Just to be clear, though, the mayor didn't submit any evidence in that case.
He did, he did refer charges.
Okay, but he did not-
And how did those charges-
Excuse me, excuse me.
Mrs. Dieter, do not assume I have things. Facts are better than your dreams, okay? I don't have it.
Believe me, my dreams are not about you.
Nothing-
Thank God.
No evidence was submitted by the mayor in those hearings.
I'm very grateful, let's go on.
I just wanted to be clear.
I know this is on the agenda, that was published before 5:30, that the local lawsuit that I filed was on it, and that was removed. As you may know, Judge Castillo ruled against the borough on January 18, and issued a court order the following day, which ordered the release of the documents to me within 20 days, and which required a reasonable attorney fees. The last day to produce that document was February 8. Despite assurances by my, that my attorney would receive the documents by February, nothing was produced. On March 14, he sent the borough a demand letter stating, sending the file motion to compel the court if you did not receive the documents, although he hoped that that would not be necessary. On March 13, my attorney filed a motion to compel court. I do not know if future council members are aware of this situation. So I am alerting each of you to publicly hope that you can resolve this matter without further costs to the borough.
Thank you, Ms. Dieter, and I apologize, because I am the one that represented to Walter Lowers, your lawyer, that I would send the document that was court-ordered, and I located it yesterday, I was supposed to send it and send it, and I got too consumed with stuff on the agenda and preparation.
I understand we're talking about February 8.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
And by the way, we, you, me, me on behalf of the borough, and your attorney, have reached an agreement. The resolution should be back on the agenda on March 20, and we've, I'm sorry, the special meeting that's coming up on Tuesday night, and we have reached an agreement on his attorney's fees, and they are going to be approved under the voucher system and all that other stuff.
I hope you do also allow for the additional costs that he's incurred, because you failed to meet your obligations. Number three, finally, Mr. Wu, at the last council meeting, you stated that you relied on information that you received from the borough borough attorney when you named your vote.
I'm sorry, in what?
What are you talking about?
On the public safety director, before he voted. Before he voted, Councilman Wu said, I am, I'm going to paraphrase, if you don't understand, he said, "I'm going to vote based on the, I had a discussion with the borough attorney, and based on that information, I am going to yes." Now, what I want to know is, there was no mention of the Favaro Simon lawsuit on the resolution to go into executive session this evening, so I assume that it was not discussed. What I would like to know is if the borough attorney has shared with you pro perception of what happened at the March 1 case management conference with Judge Perez-Busha. It's my understanding that Mr. Zino requested a transcript at the conference.
Incorrect, I did not.
Well, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. All I'm saying is, I understood that you requested it, or someone from the borough did, but if it wasn't you, my comment is still the same.
Okay, it wasn't-
I suggest that you get a copy of that transcript-
Hold on a second.
And give it to each council member, and I strongly encourage each council member to request that of the borough attorney, thank you.
Okay. And just for the record, I didn't request a transcript, and no one from the borough that I'm aware of requested a transcript. It was a case management conference, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Please raise your hand.
I don't have it, so. I don't have it. I have no empathy for you.
I thought I saw a hand up in the back, but it's, you know. I'm just gonna, can you just clear the doorway, please? Stick your name in that just, please.
I told, I told you.
Oh, you told?
Yes. You don't need my permission, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
You're being, thanks for the cuteness, but we don't need it right yet. Can we move on? Can we move on?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I am one of those that do not have a place in angle with Chris, according to the mayor's speech. I guess it was his inaugural speech or the second one. I was at the planning board meeting last week, and I was very disappointed at how our good neighbor, corporate neighbor, turned out to be treated. They had a proposal, looked like a good proposal, I think they've been an excellent fellow neighbor, and I think that we really need to, very much need to take care of our corporate neighbors. Are you scared while listening to some air?
No. Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to say.
Well, referring to the 600 units of the lawsuit by Norman, I think that was the sample.
No, you're talking about Toyota.
I am. You've got to connect the dots. Basically, I think that we have Nine W, we have Silver Avenue, we have a lot of corporate neighbors there, that, a lot of them were attracted by the previous administration, which you love so dearly, and the one before that. That's the Parisi administration, I think his name used to be on the administrative board before you took it down, is that correct? You took it down. You took it down, right? Carol was holding the ladder.
It's your time, you are free to use it however you want, you know?
I don't understand. It's your book.
Go ahead, why don't you get your point?
So, first, I was just trying to make some points as I go along.
Yeah, let's stay productive, make sure.
I am, I think I am. So, all right, so we're at the building, okay, you're taking the game down. It's a predecessor which you always seem to degrade, and you did a lot to bring corporate, corporate corporations into this town. So, what I'm saying is, and I would appeal to you and to the planning board to not give these corporate people a hard time, especially if they're citizens. Make sure that we go out of our way, perhaps you, Mr. Mayor, could go visit these corporations and just say, "Is everything okay?" I think Ms. O'Shea was.
How do you know I don't?
If you do, that's great. Why don't you put it in your newsletter? That'd be great, that's something nice to put in your newsletter.
It's in there.
So anyway, Ms. O'Shea was saying something about parking, so I think it's very, very important that we take care of our corporate citizens, and I think we should not make the mistake that Mr. Perrino's committee commissioned made, and have 600 units of the power. Moving on, I think, Mr. Mayor, you had a wonderful opportunity, and I, I will say again, I voted for you, to reach out and reach across the aisle, and to forge relationships as a true leader would do with the police department. Now, let's just take a look at what's happening here. I think you just hired a public safety director, which I think probably every chief in New Jersey would advise to get.
But he's a former chief himself, so it.
Well, I'm saying, so if you.
They all belong to the same association, right?
Well, it's not advisable, and it costs $50,000, that town. Now, did we hire, was it more than $50,000?
We don't have a salary yet.
Don't have, don't have a salary, that's interesting.
That's not true.
Okay, so who else did we hire under your.
It's $50,000, so just keep there on that. It's $50,000.
Okay. I'd like to just go a little bit forward, because I don't want to take too much time up there. So who else did we hire since you were elected? We hired a public, a town administrator. And how much, is she still here? Is she? No? Can I ask, what happened to the town administrator?
You can ask, I'm not going to answer you.
Would she get spared? Okay, yeah, I don't know. I'm sorry, it was a mushy rice, we probably shouldn't discuss.
Right.
Am I right?
Thank you.
So, are you going to hire another public administrator, town administrator? So what I'm getting at is you're hiring all these people when the town was running actually a lot better and with a lot less lawsuits before you became mayor. So I'm just asking, what's the problem that's here? You know, what, what is the problem? So I would encourage you to, to review your actions of the last couple of years, and I would encourage you to reach out, and I would also encourage you to apologize for the huge mess that you've made out of Englewood Cliff, because believe me, I hear in all the other towns, what's going on in your town. So I would encourage you to.
I hear great things. I hear great things.
I'm glad you.
So I just want to speak to two different people.
All right, well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You never really connected all the dots, but it's okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I leave that to you to connect the dots.
I drew them all, and I'll tell you what it shows on there.
Well, I wouldn't expect you to be able to.
All right, anybody else?
Because you've made such a mess out of this town.
Oh, thank you, you're, you're very insightful.
And I would say also that Mario is a very good name for you, because you have been a Marionette. Ms. McFarlane has been the Marionette.
So what I always tell, for everybody who's new to this meeting, what I always tell people is attack issues, not people. Mr. De Gregorio is unable to do that. Yes, sir?
Please.
Hold on, you have to get out of the doorway, please.
I'm not in the doorway.
You are.
I try not to hold it to proceedings, but should be in board of government matters.
Name, name and address, please.
Russell Perrino, 220 February Avenue. Thank you. We had a planning board meeting, I'll speak as chair of the planning board for a moment. We had a meeting, Mr. Park, I'm going to be stealing a bit of your thunder, you didn't attend, I know you weren't able to attend the last planning board meeting, so I will basically give your report if you do not mind. We had, what I'm on our agenda this past week was, which was 50 Sylvan Avenue, the Toyota dealership, asked for a small expansion of their building, reconstruction of signs, et cetera. That approval was granted to the applicants with conditions. And for those of the members of the public that don't know, and members of the governing body, it's not our job to just approve or deny. It's all in the details. So there were a series of somewhere between six and 10 conditions added to that approval to make sure that we as the board members know what was going to be done, and what it's going to look like when it's finished. So, one of the residents got up and spoke about that, and yelled a bit about why are we creating issues for corporate America? It's our job to make sure it's done right. So although there seems to be a need here for a circus conversation, I find it disruptive. They haven't got our planning board meeting, it's just not right. And every member in this room, residents and elected officials, should say, "Just stop. Just stop. Speak like a gentleman, treat everybody in this room like a gentleman and like a gentlewoman. It's not right." But I, I want to clear the record about what happened at the planning board meeting last week, just so the members of the board know, and the residents know the truth, and not some made up story. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I actually want to thank you, Mr. Perrino, for sharing the planning board. I know you're very busy these days with a lot of things going on, most of which we can't speak about publicly, but just know that we appreciate everything you're doing. And as I look around, I see Ralph and Mark from DPW, you guys do a great job, thank you also, appreciate everything you do. Special mention to Carol, who's been working so hard on the COA project that we have, I can't get into the details, but just know that she's doing really well there, and working very hard. William and Mark have been working very hard on the public safety committee. Appreciate everybody's help, you know, this is how we kind of move forward, by everybody doing their, their jobs. And I, one of the things I encourage people to do in the public is get involved by actually doing something, not just complaining about things that you probably don't have all the facts on anyway. So get involved, you'll figure out the facts, and you'll understand more about what we face on a day-to-day basis. Mr. Morfassas is absolutely right, you know, I can't even use the words that I want to use to describe that property down there, but you're right, you know, and I appreciate that, but let's get some solutions, folks. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
I'm Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I really wasn't going to get up and say anything, but after being attacked personally by Mr. De Gregorio at the planning board meeting, and being called out again tonight by him, I need to say something. I, as an individual, as a private citizen, I have attended board of adjustment and planning board meetings every month for years before I was appointed to any seat on any, have any official capacity. And I did speak up in a positive fashion and watched, and there were many times items that was happening at some of those meetings that were inappropriate. Approvals that were given because somebody gave a $5,000 donation to a PAC that was run by somebody that was connected to somebody else. The Toyota dealership, many of the residents here might appreciate the fact, like Mr. Perrino, the chairman, said, we negotiated with him at that meeting and got a lot of concessions from him. I think the members here would be happy to hear that the three big red Toyota signs are going away. I think some of the members here would be happy to hear that the owner of the dealership was advised that we have seen or heard that cars parked on Den Osterne Avenue for the dealership shouldn't be there. We have been advised that cars that were parked at the top of the Den Osterne Avenue near the Flat Rock Court entrance should not be parked there. And we made him aware of these things, and he was going to talk to his employees, and he said it's against the employees. We also got time limitations on the lighting, the new sign that's going to be put on, and it's going to go off a half an hour after the last employee leaves at the latest 11:00. And I know from personal observation that those big, three big red Toyota signs were on all night. So Mr. De Gregorio might feel that that's harassing a corporate resident, a corporate entity in our town. I think it's an improvement, an improving the corporate residents in our town, and for the benefit of the residents. So, you know, Mr. De Gregorio might want to go to Comedy Central with his trip to the pony show, but people here really try to do the right thing and try to improve the situations. We have many buildings that were approved and have approvals or not approvals that they shouldn't have had. And when they come in for something, it's our opportunity to try to rectify some of those erroneous and incorrect items. And we can do it when the property owner's coming in asking for something else. And I think that the board did a very good job with the Toyota dealership, and those complaints are not warranted, all right? Now, I also want to comment on something else. Although Ms. Geiger says that the police officers have their civil rights, and I'm not going to dispute that, but historically, the police in this town previously did not get involved in politics. And I said this once before at a meeting, they, at that time, many of them lived in town, and they would not even declare themselves as a Republican or a Democrat. They, they left themselves as odds. They didn't get involved because they didn't want to have it appear that they were playing favorites. And Ellen, when Ellen ran with Mr. Kotchner, she got the support of the police department and the PVA. Outrageous, okay? Then Ed and Gloria did the same thing. Again, I consider it outrageous, okay? The people in this town should feel that when they call the police, and I'm very glad that they responded to Maria Marari's without a problem, but there's been times that some of those people are afraid to call for assistance. Oh, no, oh, no, oh, no, oh, no.
They didn't come and speak up themselves.
Why, they don't have the voices maybe that you have, okay?
You want to change?
Yeah, Glenn, be quiet.
Please, let the speaker speak.
You're really, you're really rude, you're really rude.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody, you have to stay quiet, okay? Otherwise, just leave and come back after you finish your conversation.
And I, I believe that these lawsuits that are to be initiated across the board by the police department against the mayor and council, by the police chief against the mayor and council, by Ellen Park for her looksee looking for documents, Ann Karen for looking for documents, my God, you know, everybody, you, when the packet comes, sometimes they don't read until they get to the meeting. So what do they want these documents for? They want to get the documents so that they can put it in a flyer or hand it over to somebody else for a political reason, and it's a shame. And of course, in this town, a fortune for this stuff, and they're not doing any work on the council. They're sitting here smiling and laughing and thinking it's a big, big fun time. I would like to see the three Democratic council people do some work in this town and stand up just cause some trouble.
Thank you, Ms. George.
Mary, I think you forgot maybe one lawsuit that was filed by the council president against the.
I said, I said. So don't go to be my.
No, no, you're not, you're not to fight with. Don't fight with residents, that's not good.
Abuse, continue your abuse.
No, don't fight with residents.
We're not fighting.
Okay.
Stop, everybody. Folks, don't fight with residents. Residents, you've had your piece, thank you for speaking, that was one of the better ones that I've heard in long time. We've got, we've got the plaintiffs over there, we've got, come on, everybody, let's work together, will you? You already spoke, you're not coming back. Anybody else?
Starts with the mayor.
Anybody else? All right, motion to close, other sessions. One favor. Point of order, yes. Hold on. We have a point of order, and it was.
I'm going to ask for everyone to please just, um, allow me the opportunity to speak. And I'm sorry if I'm going to get upset. Shut up. You people are so rude, you are abusive.
All right, let's, let's get this.
I'm looking at Chief Murphy, and I really do respect him, please don't laugh at me.
Let's go into recess for five minutes, okay? We're having a recess for five minutes. No one speaks in the audience.
The public is closed.
We're recessing for five minutes, we'll be back. All right, we're back into session, the recess is over. Point of order, Councilwoman Miss Moore, over to the floor.
Thank you, Ms. George. Oh, I apologize, this is difficult because it's very hard for me when I see that the people that I'm working here up on the dais, I'm really asking for some respect and quiet. It, as an individual who works very hard, it's very hard for me to, when I find information out, that the people that I'm sitting up here that I trust, because you have to trust people that are on your board of directors, whether they're on opposite sides of the party or not, and when you find out that they're working against you, and they're working with members of the public to bring lawsuits or to get information to harm you, it's a very difficult thing, and this is my opinion, I want to preface this statement, it's my opinion, it appears, I've asked my attorney if I'm allowed to talk about the documents the chief shop he submitted into his discovery. And when I read these documents, which are not marked confidential, Mr. Galantucci, I did check, and I, and I respect you, I met you a couple of years back, you invited me for a cup of coffee to your office about eight years ago. I, I am shocked is, is not, I don't even know what word to use, but I'm going to give you some details, because they are not confidential documents. So we have emails from members of the fire department going to Joe Favaro, going to Joe Parisi, going to Melanie Simon, going to Karen Geiger, going to Gloria O., going to Carter Carsten's Breslin and Breslin offices. Carter Carsten is the attorney that represented me when I was on the council in 2012, and I went to for advice when I was councilperson, who's now suing me. Ellen Park, Lynn Norton, and Debbie Fair. Subject matter, conflicts of interest. And there's other emails.
Excuse me, no, can you just send the email between me and.
No, you, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor.
I just want to make sure that's not what I said. You just mentioned my name.
You don't have the floor, you can have a point of order later, but not right now. Okay, can you get, can you do that later?
I just want clarification.
Later.
I did not say what you just. Then why did you mention my name?
You don't have the floor.
Because you're in the email.
There's another question.
What email? Between who and who?
All right, is this, is this difficult for you? You can have your own point of order later, all you want, but right now, right now, you don't have the floor, okay?
Let me have another email. From Karen Geiger against the members of the fire department, Melanie Simon, Lynn Norton, Debbie Sperry, more members of the fire department, Nora Johnson, again, Carter Carsten, Breslin and Breslin, Ed Versa, Gloria O., Ed Fair, chairman of the planning board, Joe Favaro, Artyel Keith, former chief in Englewood, and Joe Parisi. In taking just a few words from the body of the email, in the mail tomorrow, it's about Karen Geiger's pound wide letter, in the mail tomorrow, I didn't want you to be too surprised, I hope it helps. I hope it helps. Karen Geiger is the President of Iona Cliffs, and Debbie Sebary is a member of the Iona Cliffs, and so is Deborah Fair. And they represent themselves to the public as a bipartisan group. I can tell you right now, that this does not appear to be bipartisan.
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan, I apologize, a nonpartisan group. This does not appear to be nonpartisan, and the emails were sent during the day, during the workday, and they were forwarded to the Chief of Police. Everyone has a constitutional right to freedom of speech, I understand that. You're representing facts to the public when you're nonpartisan, saying you're nonpartisan, and you're not. It's, it's a very serious thing, in my opinion. Working against a fellow councilperson to file a lawsuit. You hate me? Hate me! You filed it against the borough that you have a fiduciary duty to serve. You should be ashamed of yourselves, every single one of you, for bringing these lawsuits, helping, assisting. I saw Melanie Simon run to you, Gloria, at the end of the last meeting, saying, "How could she vote? What do you, how could she vote? How could she vote?"
I answered you that question.
I heard it. So did Mary, I checked.
The public has no floor rights right now, okay? You had your--
We're supposed to work together here. We're supposed to work together here.
Are you done? Are you done?
You should be done. If you put in much energy into doing this for this borough, we would be in a better place. All you people do is cause, you want to file lawsuits continually, continually.
Look, I could, I could--
Everyone knows what we've gone through with the Ellen Park lawsuit. Everybody knows, and the last two weeks, the amount of time, all the attorneys, the money it cost this town.
Because you won't give me the emails. How about that? You have an order, and you won't give me the emails.
Ellen, you are not telling the truth.
Really? That's right. You and court.
All right, so here's the, are you finished? All right, let me just say this, you know, I understand the craving for power, but like, in that side, but like, really, if you have power, do good things with it. We're trying to do good things.
Actually, I did.
You don't have the floor. You're selling vitamins to the police department.
Oh, you're not one.
Look, the, here's the thing, here's the thing. I sent an email to Ed, Gloria, and Ellen on Saturday, saying, "Did you have any issues or comments regarding the package for the council meeting?" Crickets, crickets, crickets. And then, then Ed did respond that, "I have issues, but I'll deal with them at the meeting." No, folks, you have to work in between the meetings, not at the meetings. At the meetings, we're here to report to you what we did right, what we did wrong, what we need to do better at.
Five seventeen. We've got a final agenda today.
But you do not--
You had this on Friday. Five seventeen today. Email, final agenda. Just go on. We have a long agenda.
You had this on Friday. I'm sorry you don't have, I'm sorry you don't have the time.
Email, five seventeen.
I'm sorry you don't have the time for the town.
You know what, it was the first time--
But I have time to be here.
--you reached out and asked for questions.
You need--
There was a reason--
You need to read your packages and do some work, okay? Because, and at the end of the meeting tonight, when we have our committee reports, we're also going to have a report of what you actually did as councilpeople, since the last meeting, okay? All right.
Let's move on.
All right, move on. There's no public session, ma'am, I'm sorry. And we're not listening to you anyway, right now, okay? Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor--
No, no, no.
How can a woman behave and act--
We are going to go to the next point of order.
You can't do this now. You can't.
You can't do this. You're being disruptive. I'm going to ask you to be removed.
Well, there are certain things, I sit here very respectful, but it's-- I'm sorry.
Here's, here's the next thing on the agenda. All right, next thing on the agenda, let's do the payment of claims. Councilwoman McMorro, uh, William, sorry, William is our Finance Committee Chair. Officer, uh, Ms. Simon is being disrupted. Ms. Simon, this is her first warning. Next time, I want to ask you to remove her.
How many warnings do I get, Ms. Simon?
You get one warning and one removal, okay? Thank you. Right now, we are. Can everyone hear, Councilwoman Wood? We're making a motion.
We're making a motion for the payment of claims for the period between February fifteen to March fourteen, for eight million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars and nine hundred sixty-nine cents. Nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you.
Do you have a second, please? Mark second, is it? Can we have a vote?
Councilperson Aversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
McMorro?
Upstaying.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Three yeses.
Okay, it passes. We have resolutions, we're, I think we're pulling eighteen seventy-two.
We are.
Folks, can you just keep it down, really? I mean, we have a meeting, this is what we do, we volunteer our time, we're trying to get through it. You guys can go have coffee anywhere in this town that you want, but not here, okay? Let us do our work.
We're pulling seventy-two?
Yes.
Well, I could hear you pretty well, so that's a problem, right?
But the air conditioning is on, right? You're--
All right.
Yeah.
We're pulling eighteen seventy-two.
I forgot.
We pull the check.
All right.
Madam Park, would you please start with eighteen sixty-two?
Just a minute, I need to make this clear. Councilmembers, we're pulling eighteen seventy-two for now. Did they hear that?
No, I'll tell.
All right. I'm sorry.
Eighteen sixty-two. Authorized change order number five for resurfacing at Witty Field Tennis Courts and Basketball Courts. Need a motion?
Forward.
Who moved it up? Okay.
Discussion, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Aversa.
So, I--
Can you talk into the--
I had asked this earlier in the conference, just, um, do we know exactly what this is?
So, Councilwoman Aversa, there is an engineering report that explains what happened.
No, I understand that part.
Yeah.
I'm just strictly talking about the dollars.
Yeah, I, I have to be honest with you. I wrote this resolution last week, and I reviewed the report, and I discussed with the Borough Administrator. And to be honest with you, I don't have the report with me, and I can't seem to--
I believe that what happened was, we had them resurfaced, and we had a warranty claim on some of the resurfacing that had to be done under the, the claim.
So, is this--
I don't know.
But that's why I asked--
I don't think that--
Is that different?
I thought it related to--
See, I'm not sure either.
And so, and so, just so you know, the report of the engineer is the standard review for final painting. It just so happens, is that in that review, there's, there's actually a savings of almost a hundred thousand.
If that's all I'm asking, is this, is this a credit towards us?
This is, this is a credit to us.
Or a money--
No, 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 no. We, we didn't pay them back. The money is still in the borough quarters.
Okay, so the, the question is that.
Yes, okay. It's still in the borough quarters.
That's why I asked for just clarification on the numbers. I mean, I understood--
And there's a legitimate reason why it happened, and an engineering report to back it up.
We're going to give you the report. Okay. All right.
Do we have the voting?
No, no, no.
Point for the call and vote.
Okay. Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo. Resolution eighteen sixty-three, appointment of property maintenance inspector. Need a motion?
Forward.
Start with Woo. Yeah, now, Park.
Park, second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Say yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen sixty-four, transfer appropriation reserves. This was submitted to us by our CFO. Need a motion?
Forward. Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
So, without really knowing what the hundred thousand dollars is for, under the other insurance, I don't feel comfortable voting for this right now.
Well, this is prepared by our CFO, so we rely on him--
Yeah, but you don't have, you know, a detailed description of what the hundred thousand dollars is.
Today's, right, I'm sorry, but you, you don't have to vote on it, but this is Wednesday, you received this on Friday. So, between Friday and Wednesday, we could have had the question and the answer for you, but you're asking me now at ten twenty PM.
No, we know what it is either. Yeah, we asked you this-- You're just going to say yes.
I rely on the CFO, okay?
Okay, great.
And I do, yeah, it is actually good to know, right? Because I do rely on him, he's very good. But the bottom line is, you guys have had this, and you sat on it till ten twenty PM to raise an issue. So, this is not how responsible councilpeople behave, okay? We, you don't have to vote on it, but we're going to try to pass this, okay?
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen sixty-five, authorized shared services agreement for animal control and EAP. Motion?
Forward.
So, this is the, the agreement that we modified at the Bergen County Shelter, where we send our animals for strays and, and, you know, other problem animals. The, the issue in town, once again, was, we don't want to send them to a kill shelter, is what some residents said, other residents said they don't care. The facility at Bergen County is much better in terms of the physical place than the one, the alternatives. So, I, I thought what we could do, and we were able to do this successfully, is work out a deal with the Bergen County Shelter, where they keep our animals, if they're going to have to be euthanized, they give us notice, and we have ten days to find an alternative shelter, okay? So, so they agreed, we modified the agreement, went back and forth, so here we are.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo. Eighteen sixty-six, authorization to extend not to exceed special litigation counsel in Councilwoman Ellen Park's lawsuit against the borough, captioned Ellen Park versus Borough.
Can we have a discussion on this?
Yes, and but just to remind you guys, we changed this from, from fifteen thousand down to eighty-five hundred, and five thousand for future.
No, I understand that.
Okay, I just want to make sure--
Confused about--
Yeah, so, couple of questions I have. I'm looking at the resolution, and it's stating that Carol McMorro is a defendant. I thought she was removed from this case.
She was voluntarily dismissed by Ellen Park, but subsequently, the judge gave an order that directed Carol McMorro to produce certain things. And now, there is, there is additional litigation occurring, as of yesterday. So, the, while she was, so, so while, and you should probably see it in my summary from last month, but while the litigation, she was dismissed from the litigation by Ellen Park and her attorney, but then, the judge issued an order that still required documents from her. So, that's where we're at.
I don't want to get into detail--
No, you can't ask any questions, Ellen, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you recuse, you can't ask.
I know, I understand, but--
He's not even allowed to be sitting up on this day. Let's all get off. Put your mind down, Ellen, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, what's the other lawsuit?
I understand.
What other lawsuits? Came out yesterday.
No, no, more litigation in the same lawsuit.
Get to leave the room.
I don't, all right, let's, let's just get moving here.
All right.
And this is why these, these litigations are so expensive to the borough, and for what? For what? So, you want to see my emails? It makes sense.
So, this is why you should have just given the, the emails. And it's costing the borough how many thousands of dollars?
You got them all, but, you got them all.
I need a motion.
Forward. Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
Yeah. Recused. O.?
No. I have to refuse.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
It doesn't pass? No, it's tied. No, it's two-two.
But he can't break the tie, Mayor, because he's, he's, he--
Aren't you a defendant?
They're not my attorneys.
No. No, no, he's not barred from voting, he's a defendant.
He's a defendant, so how can he vote on this same matter?
It's not my attorneys.
Comment, we, we have said repeatedly, that because they are named defendants, does not automatically mean they have to recuse. And in fact, that's already been verified instead, in a certain discussion on the record that was talked about earlier. So, she does not have a conflict of interest in this vote, in this resolution.
You know, you should also think about, before you guys file lawsuits, what you're doing to the justice system, right? There, there are kids and families that need these judges to help them, right? They're not as privileged as you all are here, but you guys are wasting our judicial time with this kind of stuff, because you want to see my email, because you want to see my email, so you could give it to them. Listen, there's kids and people who really need judges to do justice for them. This is what you're taking away from society, okay? Keep it in your heads next time you file. You, and you.
I haven't filed a lawsuit, I don't really think--
All right. Next.
You know what, how about you point your finger on the other side, Mayor? There's a lawsuit coming--
Okay, let's go.
Eighteen sixty-seven. Do you return?
Wait a minute, did you take the ball?[1586.12]
No, they're sitting up the top.
Okay, thank you, sir, please.
The mayor voted yes.
Okay.
The mayor voted yes, the vote is tied.
Please.
You're gonna have to leave. You're gonna have to leave. You're gonna have to leave.
Oh, my God.
Authorized, authorized processing of unclaimed funds request.
The gentleman next to Debbie Fair has gotta leave.
Uh...
Really?
I'm just mourning.
I, I, I'm concerned for the safety of the people here. No, 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 he's gotta leave. The, the person behind Melanie Simon. I, I don't like that, sir. I, I don't, I don't, I don't need people like that being violent.
All right, all right.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
I have a.
Wait a minute, members of the public, please, just please, tone down, please. We are trying to get through the agenda. Everyone, please. I'm sorry, is that?
It's okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman McMorro, I need a second.
Which one are we on?
Authorized processing of unclaimed funds request.
Second.
Okay. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 1868, accept donation for conference room chairs from Unilever?
Woo.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo. 1869, approve New York Grand Fondo bicycle race tour through Englewood Cliffs.
Second.
Wait, wait, who did it?
Who person?
You got it?
Uh, yeah. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1870, authorized hiring of expert witness theater bay or PE for Englewood Cliffs versus Boswell Engineering. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1871, and we did change the name of the borough administrator in there. 1871 authorized food service and snack stand for Little League. Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1872 is being pulled.
Thank you.
And 1873, authorization, uh, authorizing the borough clerk to advertise for the vacant position of borough administrator.
Second.
Let's just voting. Discussion. Sorry, yes.
So who, who, you know who's gonna, who the borough administrators?
No, we, we can't.
We can't talk about that.
A person, you're talking about.
Okay, we, we can't talk about that, but I, I just need to ask the clerk something. Okay, please correct the title.
Okay.
Because they're all looking at you.
They're all looking at me? Okay, I stand corrected, the borough administr, uh, the borough turner asked me to, uh, change what I said. 1873 authorized the borough clerk to advertise for the position of borough administrator.
Somebody.
Who moved it?
Mark, I second.
Mark seconded it?
Mark moved it, Williams seconded it.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Um, no.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
All resolutions are done, Mayor?
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 1803, Madam Secretary, please read that.
An ordinance amending ordinance 1709 entitled, "An Ordinance Fixing Salaries, Wages, and Compensation for All Salary Appointed Elected Officers Within the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey."
Can we have a discussion on this, please?
We're gonna, we should open to the public, I'm expecting first.
Okay. It's, it's the second reading, right?
Yeah, it's the second one.
Open to the public.
Let's open to the public first, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
All.
Okay, so if, if there's any member of the public who wishes to be heard on ordinance 18 dash zero three, and only 18 dash zero three, uh, please raise your hand and come to the microphone, yes. State your name and address.
Before I get to substance of the ordinance, I would like to bring to you a conflict of interest.
On, on which matter?
1803.
On the, uh...
On the, on the ordinance that we're discussing.
On the ordinance that we're discussing.
Okay.
Um, in the last two years, I have received multiple mailings, uh, with the police patch which belongs to Englewood Cliffs, it's our electoral property, um, being used, and in one case to be named Englewood Police Department being used, uh, to endorse political candidates. Well, I happen to believe that the police have the right to freedom of speech, uh, using the police patch to do so to endorse political candidates is a violation of our rules and regulations. Um, and three people up there have benefited from that. They have benefited from people who were risking disciplinary action against them to endorse the use of rural property. Um, we see the results of them getting those kinds of favors. We have the second most expensive police contract in the state. We have the fifth most expensive police chief contract in the state of New Jersey. Uh, and I have no concerns about people taking favors from the police department, uh, and then voting on matters on which the police department is at large. We had Sergeant Patton come here and said he didn't want a public safety director. Um, I think it's a conflict of interest, and it's definitely, quite frankly, due to the appearance that three members of this council have been bought and paid for by the police department, and I think they need to refuse.
Anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
Glad to hear. Have you established hours and what is fifty thousand dollars per hour five in this town? What, it's part-time, uh, here, here, once a week, you can be here two hours a day, exactly, or all the time.
We discuss one to thirty hours.
Twenty to thirty hours a week, versus fifty thousand dollars a year. So what, what is she paying an hour then? Seems like a lot of hours in the, that position, part-time, fifty thousand dollars.
He was okay with that.
Is there anybody else? In regards, in regards to conflict, I mean, you know, there, there seems to be a lot of stuff being said where there are actually active litigations and investigations going on. So, I don't understand, you know, how mailings go out saying certain things when there's litigations going on about the chief, how some of the Democrats here are being accused of, you know, they shouldn't be asked to vote because they're conflicted, but yet none of this has been settled or proved yet. So I, you know, I don't understand what any of this nonsense, we talked about, has to do with a particular ordinance, ordinance. There's only one person who knows that they need to refuse themselves, and I'm not gonna get into this and have a whole public display here as to who I think that is, you know who it is. And, you know, I'm sorry if it doesn't work, because the vote doesn't go the way it's supposed to go, as far as some people want it to go, but you know, it's very clear, we need to fix this.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Daisy Gregorio, 165, Charlotte Place. Hi, I'm confused. Can you explain to me why this ordinance is there in detail and what it means?
You want to take that one?
Which one?
1803, that's what we're discussing, right? Just in detail, why is it there?
It's establishing the salary for the public safety director position.
Why do we need an ordinance for the salary?
Every ordinance that we, every salary that we pay goes into an ordinance.
I don't think that's.
I, I think, I think what he's asking is, every year we adopt a salary ordinance with all the set positions in the borough. This is a newly created position, so last year, when we adopted our salary ordinance for 2017, this position did not exist.
I see.
Therefore, we need to introduce it and have a public hearing on a newly created position, hence.
Okay. So, I understand, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, I understand what I said, now, is 18 oh, uh, dash oh four?
That's later.
That's later. Okay.
Remember when, when, when I opened to public, I said we can only speak on 1803?
Yes, I.
That's what we're doing now. 1803.
If this comes one number after 18.
I understand.
Procedurally.
It's a fuck here.
Procedurally, it comes well after.
Well, very good. So 1803 is basically you are looking to approve the new public safety director.
Salary.
William Williams has recommended. And, uh, Mr. Woo, Councilman Woo, can you tell me why in detail you feel that this position is necessary, and why, because everyone behind me needs to, uh, to, uh, pay the extra fifty thousand dollars?
Okay, it's, just, just let me jump in for one second, just, just to correct the record. There was already a vote on the PS bill. This is for the salary. Councilman Woo, you certainly can answer if she refuses to do so.
Um, we discussed this before, Dave, uh, relative to policies and procedures inside the police department, uh, also relative to Chief's retiring in January, so I stayed on the record and looking for somebody to help us with the succession plan for Chief.
It would seem to me that you could actually, if you know that the person is definitely, has to retire, that you could be more efficient and actually advertise for the position itself and start that interview process now, rather than hiring a person and approving our tax money. And how much was that salary? Are there any benefits or anything else that's not, uh, just included? Nothing straight fifty thousand?
Mr. De Gregorio, the, the procedures for promotion to chief are being introduced in 1806, which.
We're not talking about.
I know, I'm telling you, but.
We're talking about 18 dash oh.
No, no, you were, that's why I'm telling you that 1806 deals with the subject matter that you're raising about promotion to chief.
Okay.
1803 deals with the money to pay to the public safety director, who I believe sincerely we need for a number of reasons, including the reasons stated by Councilman Woo.
Right.
Is there anything else that you would like to discuss?
Well, I think that we need a public safety director, because you were unable to forge a good relationship with, with the, with the chief.
Thank you.
So basically, your lack of leadership and lack of people skills is costing the borough lots of extra fifty thousand dollars here. So I would say, as a taxpayer and a resident, and undesirable resident, uh, as you have said in the past, uh, I have no place here of saying it here, thank you, that I would urge every council member to vote N-O, no.
Why don't you do this, when you're done? Stick to, when you're done, later on, speak to Mr. Tellger and ask him why we need a place, Mr. Tellger, and ask him why we need a public safety director.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Why, why should I?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I really want to know. Why do you directly? Please, I'm gonna hold you to this, Mr. Mayor. Why should I talk to this?
Current litigation, would you please?
No.
Mr. Mayor, detail, you brought.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I demand an answer.
I said just, you don't get any.
Why should I talk to him?
We don't get to demand.
Anybody else, please?
I get to do what I want, Mr. Attorney.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I demand, why should I talk to this gentleman? I don't even want to know. I don't know.
Please sit down, thank you.
I'll sit down when I'm ready, if you're not gonna tell me to sit down.
Please leave.
The mayor just did.
Please leave.
I don't care.
Please leave.
I'm not leaving, I'm not out of.
No, you are out of order, you're, Lieutenant Tracy, please remove Mr. De Gregorio.
I'm leaving on my own.
All right, until next month, um, Ms. Geiger.
Karen Geiger, 270, Albridge. I'm obviously against setting up a public safety director here, I'm against funding the position, I'm hesitant about its impact, but be that as it may, my concern is for the comment that Lauren made about the use of the police patch.
No, not right now.
I know that, excuse me, Lauren brought it up, and I'm responding.
No, no, I was talking to the mayor, I'm sorry.
The comment I have is directed to each of you on the council, referring to what Lauren said. Number one, the police patch or a reasonable facility, it appears upon the agenda, very prominent, if you look at John Path's post, when he commented on, missed upon Michael McMorro's lawsuit against the borough.
Who's John Path?
I knew I had something to do with this somewhere.
Who's John Path? John Path is the leading advocate for transparency and government in the state.
According to who?
Self-proclaimed, or are you proclaiming in that? Excuse me, I'm allowed to make my comment, you can, you don't, I'm not asking for your opinion on this person, um, he can fend for himself if he so chooses. But basically, on his website, when he describes the McMorro lawsuit, which he does, or out of the settlement agreement, which he does of most settlement agreements in the state because he's an advocate of open government, uh, he prominently displays in copy of the police patch of the borough clerks or reasonable facilities.
Is he a member of our police department?
Excuse me, Lauren, that's all I want your attention to.
Yeah, he's not, is he? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
So they can't use their patch, I mean, outside, I just want to understand, not use the law, it's, I mean, votes.
Is there someone?
All right.
Before the public, before the council. Can I have the floor now?
If, if it's a point of order, you could, yes, you could direct that to me, and I'll recognize you, and you can say what you want.
Okay, point of order, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Woo, what would you like to say?
Okay, so under the, um, the same ordinance that we were just talking about, um, I'd like to, um, I'm going to make a motion to table that to the next meeting, given that there are, um, litigations that are pending, um, at least two of them that I could think of right now. One is the chief's prerogative writ, uh, for the public safety director, and the other one is, um, I believe, um, Melanie Simon and Jokka Barrows' lawsuit, um, stating that, uh, Council President Carol McMorro may be, you know, conflicted in this, and she may not have, you know, voted on this matter, so I, I'm making a motion to table this to the next meeting.
I second that, that's reasonable.
Does that involve?
Okay, that was a motion by Councilwoman Woo, and second by Counselperson Zaverta. Uh, Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
No.
M. Park?
No.
Woo?
No.
Mayor?
No.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, in my opinion, what Councilwoman Woo just said confirmed what I said about Melanie Simon. Mrs. O'Shea, who was in my attention, she heard Melanie Simon running up to Councilwoman Woo about me, she's got an active lawsuit, and going forward, I believe Councilwoman Woo should be refusing.
Is that true?
With everything having to do with me.
Is that true?
You can ask Mrs. O'Shea.
Is that true?
You know what, I don't remember, and, you know what?
How convenient.
You know what, by the way, Miss, Miss Valari, what do you expect?
No, no, so don't engage the ordinance, don't engage your, it's not good.
Listen, Mayor, why, why, why is it true that you're only getting people on this side of the room, uh, okay, from this meeting?
Mrs. Valari, do you remain silent?
She is making comments during the meeting, and you do not ask her to be quiet.
But you're changing the subject.
Okay, because, Maria, Paul, Miss Valari, you know what, during tonight's meeting, do you know how many times she interrupted, and you didn't say a word about her?
I think, I think the issue is that you have a conflict on this matter.
I do not have a conflict, and I do not, absolutely not have a conflict.
Uh, well, the last thing this borough needs is more litigation, and I fear that you're spawning that by, by claiming you don't have a conflict.
Yes, yeah.
Motion, please, table.
May I? Would you like me to take a motion to?
Let me, I'm not feeling.
Second.
Okay, so this is a motion for ordinance 1803, Counselperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park? E. Park?
No.
O.
No.
McMorro?
Um, I don't know, I don't have phones.
You voted for these, correct?
Yeah, upon advice of council, yes. Upon advice of council, yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Eighteen oh three passes. Okay, eighteen oh four, an ordinance amending ordinance seventeen oh nine entitled Ordinance Fixing Salaries, Wages, Compensation for All Salary Appointed and Elected Officers with the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. Need a motion to open? Floor is open to the public, wishing to speak on eighteen oh four.
So, on eighteen oh four, if anyone wishes to speak, please come to the microphone after I recognize you, and after you raise your hand, state your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one for once. Uh, move to close. All in favor?
Second.
All right. Shall we have a vote?
I need a motion for the vote.
So.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
The next one is the first reading with a public hearing on April eleventh. Eighteen oh two, an ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs, Chapter Two, Section Thirteen, entitled Police Department to Update the Table of Organization and Other Sections. Need a motion?
Remove.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
No, so I'm not about to go in this.
This is general legislation, ma'am.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Eighteen oh five, with a public hearing on April eleventh, an ordinance amending ordinance seventeen oh nine entitled Ordinance Fixing Salaries, Wages, and Compensation for All Salary Appointed and Elected Officials in the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. Motion?
Remove.
Second. Is this the first reading? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's the first reading. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo? What did you, is eighteen oh six, did you want to talk about it, am I, or?
Um, yeah, I will talk about it, just to make a bit of a record.
Okay, so, okay, so, eighteen oh six, an ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs, Chapter Two dash thirteen entitled Police Department to Establish Promotional Procedures for Position of Chief of Police with a Public Hearing on April eleventh.
Um, and just mainly for the council's certification, but also for the public, we sent around a draft to you that was drafted by the labor attorney on Friday, and, uh, I had quite a bit to do for preparation, and I did not get to this ordinance till this afternoon. You did receive a copy of it. The changes are substantive changes adding several provisions. I hope that you have, or at, or at this point have your questions answered on it. I believe that my additions and my clarity of trying to clarify some language here are appropriate considerations for both eligibility of chiefs of police, as well as how to make the selection process, and it's fairly simple. And the changes that I made, I reviewed with Mark Rutterman as well, so that I could get, uh, this document to the council now. And you can see that the appropriate authority in this instance, the mayor and council, is going to be part of the selection process, unless you at some point defer to the police committee of the council, who may take that up. So, that, but, but it gives you a choice here, appropriate authority or its designee, which would be a, a council committee. It, it talks about your standard police chief requirements of how you, you know, the testing, the essays, the, um, uh, the written exam, an oral interview, those are all standard police hiring procedures. And, and in addition, uh, the, um, the other requirements, as you see, are, you know, a review by the appropriate authority of a personnel file, review of the educational records, review of criminal background check and a driver's license check, psychological testing only in the event it hasn't been performed. These are all things that are pretty standard for any hiring of a police officer, but also for a promotion of a police officer, and that is what this is meant to be limited to. So.
I guess I should.
Yes, yes.
The word P in here.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's pretty, I can add that in. There is a typographical error, which I will add, mayor quoted, uh, uh, section one C, it should be and, you see, all four of those require.
At the end, after the semicolon, certain and, and then the same thing on number seven, three B seven.
Yes, okay. The point being, each of those eligibility requirements must be met, not one or the other, all four of them. Three of the nine? Okay.
It should actually be after eight, um, three B eight, after E, the word and should be inserted.
So.
It's conjunctive.
So, mayor, I have nothing further unless there are any questions from any of the council members about the revisions, you already had basically the, the substantive, but I do have revisions, Captain, will you, your committee person, for the, for the?
My question is, uh, the weights that have been put on all of these, uh, criteria, so, you know, it's a long list here, so.
Yes, my understanding, and again, I did not.
On the advice of Labor Council, he did not want to have waiting.
He did not want to have waiting, and, and it is not required, and so the ultimate decision made in the process may consider one or the other to be more important. There may be something like, I'll just give you an example, let's say that a particular candidate's, uh, driving history, because I put that in here, uh, shows that there are issues that may be problematic to be a police chief, putting it gently, okay?
Will each council person be weighing in on their own, in their minds, when they see the, uh, application?
What, what, what I perceive the labor council set up here is that it's the appropriate authority who will be involved, or it's designee, the police committee, and what I suspect is, as we get there, we will have a resolution making that decision. Who's going to do it? Appropriate authority or the police committee. Or if you all agree, you're all going to do it together, then you all interview everyone together.
I would be in favor of everybody participating. Council, you agree?
I have a question.
Well, the mayor's asking a question, though, he's, he's indicating, go ahead.
Do you all agree that you should all be involved in the hiring process?
Yes, I don't disagree with it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, that's, so you could have a committee, or you could have the entire appropriate authority, I think the entire appropriate authority should do it. Um, there might be some vetting, but before that, we'll figure it out.
So, um, will this discuss with the police committee and, and any one of the police departments, or the chief, or a, uh, this was discussed?
Just to get feedback from.
This ordinance was, was, uh, was.
And can you, can you?
No, I, I understand, I know that. Yes, I did, but did anyone speak to the police personnel about any, you know, any of it?
I.
Not that we have to, I understand.
You don't have to, that's what I was going to tell you, you don't have to.
Without getting into the particulars, there were references made at a meeting, uh, with representatives of the PBA.
Okay, so they had some input, I guess, you said?
Well, no, they, they were given an idea of what was on the horizon, and this is it. We are, under, under the very police chief's bill of rights that we all talk about, that also is often ignored, but several provisions there are powers given to the municipal entity, and one of them is, we get to enact ordinances that govern the police department.
I think you missed my point, my point is not that, there's nothing.
Okay.
That I see.
Okay.
The, the point is, did you at least have the courtesy to discuss it with any of the police department, that's all. I'd say has to, I'd say.
Okay, okay.
Labor Council worked with us to formulate this, as I said, we, we related certain aspects of it, eligibility, aspects of it, which were, I would say, positively received, um, but that, that's all I can say about that meeting, because it was close, close to it.
Point of order? Point of order?
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to make the motion to table this, um, and the only reason why is, Amber, you sent me a draft at four twenty, and then you said there were some changes right now.
No, also, the draft on four twenty is what you have in front of you.
Okay, that's what we have in front, you came to us and said that you got the final, just.
Yeah, it, it's, that was the one at four o'clock. And you had the earlier draft from Friday.
And there's no different, no, there's no indication as to what were the changes from the draft.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was actually before Friday, it was like a week ago.
No, I, but, Amber, did, didn't you, am I, am I not sure, did, didn't you just come to me before I say?
Yeah, but, but, but it was, it was this afternoon that you got it. I will tell you, I will tell you what I added.
Okay.
I will tell you what I added. Review of candidates' educational records, why? Because earlier, in the original dra- draft, it says we, we want a candidate with a bachelor's degree. So, in, in the selection process, I said, we shall look at the educational records, you want to see the college degree, that's what I put in. The next thing I put in, and I discussed with Mark, was we should have a criminal background check and driver's license check, even though, you, so you understand, we are making, this ordinance proposes consideration of current police officers of the department only. So, one might say, well, there are police officers in our borough, why do you need a background check? Because I've had the experience of police officers coming up for promotions in another town, where it turned out that there were criminal records, and so I recommended that in this promotion process for the chief, the, any candidate who wants to be considered must consent and, and, and do whatever is necessary to do a background check. Same thing with the driver's license, it's only due diligence to get this information to new council members. That's, that's a change that I made. The, the, the rest of the things that you see were all in there, except I rewrote them to be more English-speaking and, and more like an ordinance, because Mark Rutterman doesn't write ordinances, I do, okay? So now, let me just make sure I didn't add anything. All these other things, the psychological test, drug testing, the personnel file, the promotional, all of those were in there last Friday, okay?
So, in the future, just send a redline version.
I will.
After the first draft.
I only really added like three things.
Well, we can do, though, right now, is we could recess for five minutes, it's only three pages, two and a half pages.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the changes are, otherwise I have to do a side-by-side comparison.
I'm sorry, I should have done.
No, just do redlines, it's fine.
All right.
Just mark your changes, um, okay, so.
So, do you withdraw your motion? I, I'll, thank you.
Okay, I need a, a motion to move it.
And the motion to move adds the word and after one C, and af- the word and after eight E. Have a motion, please.
So.
Councilperson Zaverta?
I still have one problem, because I, I have a problem with one seat, that's always been my problem, I've voted no on before, I think if it is in there, it's still a little less. But I, I understand, um.
You don't want, this officer, that a bachelor's degree?
I wanted to have, I always wanted to have the option. I always wanted, I didn't want that must have, I always wanted to be.
Uh, we, we debated this quite a bit, and, uh, I spoke to William a lot about it, and also to Mark Rutterman, and, and basically, the, the, the prevailing norm is, as he explained it to me, is to have this, have a must.
Like I said, it's my position.
It is the top position.
Yes, I know. But that limits some people's, doesn't it, I would imagine?
I don't know.
I know, I don't need that. And I hate to miss out on somebody that might be qualified. I'm going to say no, it's all right. I agree with everything else in there, but that one thing always sticks in my craw and I can't.
Okay, so in the future, don't wait till the meeting to discuss this.
Well, if I get to, I discussed that before, and, and you would have to change our ordinance.
No, we, you got it a week ago, this is the first time of hearing.
We'd have to change the ordinance that we have now on the, you know, we have a thing that says if we hire police officers, they have to have a college degree, I agree with that.
Yeah, but that's a new, uh, that's a new higher rate.
But it's still in there.
I understand, but your objection to one may not apply with this, correct?
So, he's a no.
All right, all right.
It's okay, I, I understand.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
abstain.
General legislation, I believe, you have the right to vote.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. Um, just to mention this, eighteen oh one, I had it all on here, but just, yeah, everybody know.
Awesome, we're moving, okay, so, eighteen oh one, which appears as the ordinance coming up next, engineering phase of the Fifth Street Extension Project, have been tabled to March twentieth at six thirty PM, public hearing.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, let's do committee reports, state your committee, and, um, tell us what you did on your committee, and then also tell us what you did as a council member since last meeting. Uh, Councilman Zaverta?
Seems like I've responded to a ton of emails over time.
Can you just talk into the mic?
I'm talking into the mic.
No, get closer.
I'm married, I don't have to. Uh, I have lighting, we, I have a report about, uh, lights that are out, streetlights that are out, I think Lizette has that report from the police department, um, nothing on historical, and that's all I have.
Did, did you attend any meetings on behalf of the committee or the borough?
No, not a budget meeting, I did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Park?
Yes, um, not much to report, uh, as far as board of health, except I think we're going to try to maybe do a blood drive, which would be great, um, once I have more information and a date, we'll, I'll let everybody know.
That's a good idea, let's do that.
Transportation, um, so, I know at the, um, down at the League of Municipalities last November, um, you know, there were some, um, transportation options for senior vans, um, so I believe the administrator was looking into some of the options, and, uh, I will report back when I have more information.
Thank you, that, that's important that we do that, I was speaking to representatives of the senior citizens, and, um, you know, I think it's something that we should figure out how to fix, and we'll do our best to do that. Councilwoman Park?
Well, thank you, ma'am. Most importantly, I've been, uh, on the liaison to, to COA, I've been devoting almost all of my time to that, and we have one motion on Friday, we have one on the twenty ninth, because of the litigation, I'm not allowed to go into, um, any specific details, but , uh, council has been briefed in closed sessions, they've, uh, all their questions have been answered, and, um, of the chicken at the, uh, especially in the.
Thank you. Council Park?
Yes. Our training over the day was, uh, by the, uh, of the, uh, of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, members, uh, that's, you know, because they are, while, they're, they're working very hard, they're always, that, that are already interested, uh, in, uh, form, divided any political, you know, in, in, or the, uh, uh, members, and they are learning, you know, working very hard, and they're, they're, they're so dedicated, they're trying a lot, so, now, I'm very disappointed about this, this kind of attitude. And another one is, uh, I'm a, I'm the chairman of the public safety, but I am a member, about three weeks ago, we surrounded, uh, uh, the police, uh, team, and, and, uh, to reach each other for our new higher, the public safety background, at the time, I mentioned about our, uh, uh, first generation issues, because they have a landing barrier for each part, uh, and, uh, each side, uh, in the, first generation, they are number two, they're effectively communicating with police officers, they have a variety of issues, so I asked, I asked, you know, this team and this senior member to develop a, uh, sort of a communication program, as you know, here, almost, uh, one of the first issues residents have here, second generation, one month, one point five generation, they are very effectively communicating with the police department, but, first generation, they had some issue here, so hopefully, police chief, you'll have to, to, we have to discuss about this type of issue, so, so, that will be discussed about, that will be.
Thank you, council.
Public safety, um, during November February, we had two budget meetings for the police and DPDW, um, it's very productive, we haven't been able to finalize the budget, as, uh, the finance committee, we haven't been able to get together yet, hopefully after this meeting, we'll be able to set a certain time for us to finish up our work. On Wednesday, February twenty eighth, we introduced the new, uh, public safety director to the entire, uh, most of the police. to the entire, uh, most of the police officers, because there were twenty people in the room plus our chief. I thought, uh, I mean, public safety director was very respectful of our chief, respectful of our mayor, and also respectful of all, uh, you know, train members, uh, of the police force. I also want to commend, uh, the police department yesterday, there was a resident who was, uh, who lives in town, they're, they got in a car accident on the summit in Palisades, right at that intersection, their car was totaled, um, and, uh, the perpetrator just goes a hit-and-run, and, uh, I understand, definitely happy that, uh, you know, the person who committed the act was spotted, so, I'm thankful for that. I want to also just thank our D. P. W., led by Mark, uh, because two snowstorms we had last Wednesday, uh, I got a chance to ride out with Mark, and, uh, you know, look at all the streets, and they're all out there working hard, and it was really a very good job that was done, I was pleased to hear that, would you feel that you talked about that as well with Mark, just making sure we have like a service level there for getting the paths, with, um, you know, cloud, and I, it looks great that, uh, one of our residents actually noticed that, uh, who talked about that, so we always try to clear those paths quickly, um, and, um, you know, I appreciate Mark taking me around and showing me where the sun pumps in town are, it was really exciting to do that. So, all of that, um, don't you need a report? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Borough business, there's a food drop-off box out in the lobby there, collecting food for the office of concern down in Englewood. Please try to remember to bring a can of soup, whatever, something non-perishable to the next meeting, we're gonna do that at every meeting, come the next morning, and if you want tomorrow morning, it'll be out there as well, you could drop it off on the way to work. In terms of, anybody else have old business? Uh, for new business, I, I read Dr. Seuss' story up at Northridge School and Goddard School in the past month, had a lot of fun. Um, we, we met with the P. B. A. in January, February, uh, today's meeting got adjourned by them, and we're trying to meet with them every month to talk about their contract, whatever issues they want to talk about, so, um, and look, I'm hoping that we reschedule that, uh, for next week or the week after, and get back on track there. D. P. W.'s on the way, Joe, guys, thanks again, really appreciate everything you're doing, and, um, that's all. Okay, anybody else have any new business? We have an item here, um, discussion regarding citizen complaint regarding Bayview Avenue and E. C. P. D., that, that came to me, I looked at it, and I related to the borough council.
Me?
Yes.
Yes, so, I did, okay, so, there, there is a citizen complaint about parking on Bayview Avenue, and he raised some concerns about members of the police department. I haven't spoken to him, he spoke with the borough clerk. I will reach out to him and try to gather some information and, you know, transmit with the police department and see if the citizen, if something can be worked out to allay his concerns that he's raised.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I just didn't get to it today, but thank you.
It came in on Monday.
It came in on Monday, I think, right.
Correct.
Forget, hold on a minute. Monday? Okay, so the next item is discussion on two disciplinary matters regarding Chief Michael Choffey, you just noticed, and I'm gonna turn it over to the borough attorney.
I just need a quick break before we start. Excuse, excuse me.
Hello.
Again, I just meant to use the, okay, facilities. I'd ask each of you, I gave you a confidential memo that gives you an idea of what we're gonna discuss, please take a few minutes to read it. I will be asking along the way if you have any questions as we go through it, uh, and also, I think I'm going to speak from down here, and I will be asking the chief and his attorney to come up to council table. Why?
The last minute.
It was? Well, I have to be sure. Okay, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be most usual at the appropriate time. I'd ask, I'd ask that Mr. Gallantucci and/or whichever council is handling it, and Mr. Chi, and Chief Chiotti come up to the table, uh, and we'll take a, a brief break.
I'm gonna have a ten-minute recess. No, give me a second. Everybody, uh, wait, Mark, it's Mark. All right, we're out of recess.
Okay.
Amber Gilley.
I'm marking through the record, I'm, so eleven twenty-five P. M., and just because I'm sitting here and the other side is over there, doesn't mean that we're adversaries. I just wanna speak to you, council members, and have eye contact with you over the course of what I'm going to do in the memo that I provided to you. This is mainly a procedural, uh, process right now, and we're gonna follow the process that I laid out, there are going to be times where I'm gonna stop and ask if anyone has any questions or has any concerns. I've invited Chief Chiotti up with his council, there are two councils here, can you please put your names on the record?
Chief Chiotti and myself, I'm Robert Gallantucci, and my partner is Richard Potter.
And for the record.
Richard, Richard what?
Potter.
Potter, a member of the firm of Gallantucci and Chiotti. And of course, for the record, because this may end up being a transcript, my name is Anne Marie Mazzuto, and I am the borough attorney. My purpose here is to ensure that the borough council has a proceeding that is in accordance with what should be expected for this type of matter. First off, for notice, and second, for an opportunity to be heard to Chief Chiotti. He's been receiving a rice notice, and as a result, we are doing this in public. For members of the public, and excuse my back, and at some point, I'm gonna go back up there, but for members of the public, again, I caution you, I do not want commentary or outbursts from anyone. This is meant to be in decorum, you are before a mayor and council, this gentleman has rights, we do not want this to divulge into some kind of circus, so please, respect the chief, me, the attorneys, and everyone else.
Council, can you just make clear to the audience also that it was Chief Choffey who elected to have this publicly?
Yes.
The attorney that elected to do it privately.
Yes, and I will speak on that a little later, too, but as, as maybe some of you know, the chief, as an employee of the borough, and any employee of the borough, when you are considering disciplinary matters, has the right to rice notice and to choose whether to have this type of a proceeding before the public, or whether to allow the neighboring council to go into a closed session. So, we're here because the chief chose to have it in public. So, again, I still believe, yeah, he has the right to.
He has the right to, but he has nothing to hide, so that's why he's in the public, so everyone can see.
Okay, okay, very good. Uh, so now, if everyone has your memo, I, I have, one, one second, just, I am going to address recusals at a certain point in time. This first part is no discussion on the facts of the matter, and no discussion on the hearings that went on, so I'm not asking for refusal now. When we get to that point, I'm going to ask for refusal. Does she want to make a comment right now?
I just wanted to say to the council that.
I think, wait, how do you want to run this?
I'd rather get shit down.
Oh, that's all he's got, no problem, that's fine. I prefer standing. Uh, is that okay, man?
So then, why don't you, if you're gonna stand, can you take the handheld microphone?
Oh, okay.
And get then that one.
I won't stand, I'll stand right away. All right, let's try to run through what I am calling notations and cautionary guidance for the council. These are things that I am telling you as borough attorney that you should be paying attention to as we go through this matter. First off, the name of it, the name of the case is discussion of two disciplinary matters, two separate charges, as to the chief of police and the rice notice that he received, and that the chief has requested the rice hearing in public, so that's what we're doing. Uh, first off, the hearing officer report has been distributed to council members, and some have received redacted forms, and this, in, this, in my opinion, is not in open public record at this time, and is not to be discussed in detail by any council member at this time.
And, and that record refers back to a hearing?
Yes.
And that place one?
And, and I, I have that here. The next point is, the hearing officer's recommendation has to do with the hearings that were held in public at the choice of Chief Chiotti on February twenty-one of two thousand seventeen. There are transcripts that exist, I was surprised to hear that someone has the transcripts, no, I do not believe that I determined their open public record, they may very well be, because the hearing itself was in public. So the transcript of the testimony, if someone has obtained it, and I do have a copy of it, is in fact, uh, the same thing that happened if you were to have come in here and watched the hearings on February twenty-first of last year. There were witnesses, exhibits, and, and the hearing was held, everyone made their legal argument, and then subsequently, legal briefing. Next, during the course of this presentation tonight, and as we continue to a adjourned time in the future, each of the two disciplinary charges will be discussed separately, because there are issues of refusal for only parts of matters, which we will get into shortly. But that is the purpose, the hearing officer treated each charge separately, heard the hearings separately, and wrote a decision separately on each of the matters, so that is how we are going to continue. I'm noting for the record and for your edification that along the way during the hearings, various legal issues, legal issues, were raised by the parties and decided by the hearing officer, and you, as a mayor and council, play no role in the legal decisions and rulings made by the hearing officer. You do not have the ability to question the legal rulings or to change the legal rulings. Next point, the hearing officer has made a report of recommendations, it's dated sometime from eleven of two thousand seventeen, all of you have received it, some in redacted form, there will be no revelation in open public session at this time of what the hearing officer recommended. So I caution you, whatever he recommended, whatever was sought, whatever was sought by both of the sides there, okay, because the borough was represented by labor council, we're not going to reveal that decis, that recommendation at this point, there may be a later one when you make a decision. The next point is what your true role, role is here. Your role is to look at the hearing officer's report, and you have three choices. You may accept the hearing officer's recommendation, you may modify the hearing officer's recommendation, or you may reject the hearing officer's recommendation. That is the end result that you will be asked to decide. That's not gonna happen tonight, it's going to happen at the continued part of this hearing. But, just so you understand, modify, accept, or reject. The employee, Chief Chiotti and his attorney, will be afforded the right to make a brief statement to you or to answer any of your questions. This opportunity will be given for charge number one, and then again, for charge number two. It is not for the chief or his council to make new arguments, or new facts, or new testimony. So again, I caution council, and I would interrupt if that were to happen, this is not to supplement the record that has already been made. The hearing officer made a recommendation on a record, that record is closed, we are giving him due process, right of notice, opportunity to be heard, that doesn't mean he gets to add new things or new facts, so we, we will, we will be careful with that. Next point, uh, you council members will be afforded the opportunity to ask questions of the chief or of his council. It is up to them whether they want to answer any of your questions, or address you in any way, it's solely their choice. We give them the opportunity, they can take their legal. After we have this brief presentation, and I promise it's not gonna be too moral, okay, but we gotta get through this legal stuff, after we have the factual scenarios described and the stuff that I have already described, described, the matter will be adjourned, and we will schedule it for deliberations in closed session as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act. It is my opinion, in checking my law and checking my cases and consulting with other experts, municipal attorney experts in the field, that deliberations are allowed to be in closed session, the rice part of it is here, in open, he has the choice. Chief Chiotti, in my opinion, does not have the right to say, we have to deliberate in public. Your deliberations should be in closed session, where you can be free to discuss among yourselves and arrive at a decision as a governing body. So, this will be, we will take the factual scenarios, now, we will adjourn until April eleventh, where we will have closed session. I will invite Mr. Chief, Mr. Gallantucci, to respond to what I've stated on this particular legal point in either now, or briefly, or in writing as a legal analysis before April eleventh, we'll work it out with him, and, and we'll also see if, if there can be some kind of a give and take there. Uh, at some point, you will then come out of deliberations, you will be on the dais, and you will, there will be a motion, someone's gonna have to make a motion, and then you're gonna have to vote. Each matter will be handled separately by resolution. Once resolutions are adopted, Chief Chiotti, who has the right to appeal to the Superior Court in this case, his time to make that appeal runs the day you sign, you adopt the resolution from the mayor and council. Now, some housekeeping, previously, we enlisted this matter for closed session on November ninth of two thousand seventeen, and I distinctly recall that there were about twenty-five matters on closed session that night, and I'm not quite sure why we did, we had it listed, this one listed. We did not hold a closed session that night, we did nothing on your matter, and all of the council people are aware of that, and a citizen made an inquiry, this matter was not discussed on November ninth, even though it was on the agenda. Now, the first thing I'm gonna do at the beginning of each charge is to ask for recusals, and I have discussed recusals in various ways with several members of the public. I'm ready to move on unless you council members have any questions at this point. Have I laid it out? Ed?
Thank you.
Ed? Okay, he's good. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Understand what we're doing here? You're good? Mr. Gallantucci, do you have any questions or comment you wanna make on the points that I've discussed already?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite sure why we're going through all of this, but I think the purpose of my being here tonight.
Yeah.
Is to address the appropriate authorities.
Yeah.
All of these folks.
Yeah.
Except for those people who need to refuse, and of course, there is a refused motion before we get started, and, uh, I, I think, I'm sure you reported this back to the, uh, the man, excuse me, I'm sure that you reported this back to the mayor and council, that the court was talking about Carol.
Yes, I'm going.
The litigation, I mean, I would be more impressed if you defined the case similarly as this.
Okay, okay. You can stop right there, we're gonna address recusals right now, okay? If you're a member of the council that wishes to refuse on both matters, Councilwoman McMorro, thank you very much, please move from the dais. And nowhere. Well, I am of the opinion that you can stay in this room, if you prefer not to go there, you cannot communicate with anyone.
I'm asking you, and for a.
Go ahead, where do I go?
Where would you like to go? Wherever you advise me I can go.
Go ahead, go there, please. You cannot communicate by phone or any other way. Do not communicate by phone to any members here, you know that. I don't have to tell you that. You can take it, you might wanna. You can take it, you might want to talk to our speaker.
All right. Just to close the door.
Charlie, you don't have to give a non-trust. So now, everyone else, you're good, you don't have conflicts on the first charge, which is improper dissemination of materials. Good? Ed, speak up on the record.
I'm good. Are you asking me the record?
Yeah. Ellen?
I'm good.
Gloria? Mark? And William?
Good.
Mayor, conflict? Conflict in this matter?
No.
No? Okay. I'm going to eliminate my comment, because you and I have already discussed that I'm going to accommodate any legal stuff you want to give me on closed session deliberations, okay? So I'm taking that out. Get that, okay. Members of the council, I am not going to give you a long summary of the facts. I am sure you have all done your due diligence and read the opinion of the officer. So for purposes of making a record, the hearing was held on February
I understand that that is being redacted by someone?
I redacted part of the opinion, because there is an issue of recusal for other members on the second charge.
Well, you know, plenty should be provided
Okay.
so that I can make my objections wherever I need to.
So here's my opinion on your request. It's a good one, but I believe as borough attorney, I'm the one that has to counsel that on whether or not they have conflict of interest, and you can raise or make any record you like when we get to charge number two. Charge number one, all members have been provided with the results, with the report as a charge number one.
Would you like to answer the topic?
Well, okay, I don't have the redacted in front of me, but I will tell you exactly what was redacted. The hearing officer's report is dated February 20th, I'm sorry. No, 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 I have to make a record. No, I have to make a record. I'm sorry, I have to make a record.
Did any of you print the redacted one?
The hearing officer's opinion is dated November 6th
So why don't you go to Mr. Gallantucci?
It considers 31 pages. Redacting of charge number two was, and I can provide it to you later.
Do you have any? I have the one that she said.
I'm sorry, you know what?
I will, I will. I have it. I will provide it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Now, the improper dissemination of materials is a charge that was issued by the mayor, acting as the appropriate authority, as was outlined by the borough attorney at that point, and was then the subject of a subsequent legal decision by the hearing officer, because it was raised by Chief Chiotti, the attorney's one in the hearing. The charges were found to have been appropriately signed by the mayor. The first charge was improper dissemination of materials. It had to do with a certain letter written on, hold on a second. Written by officers of the PBA. And it was requested by the chief, and it was written by, yes, two representatives therefore of the PBA, and the topics were a few different topics, including the junior police academy. The charge of improper dissemination, which was with respect to the chief at the time before the hearing, allegedly taking that memo, which I think, I believe was an interoffice memo, I will check the exhibits, and disseminating it outside of the police department in violation of various rules and regulations, all of which you see in the opinion of the hearing officer. That is the factual basis of the charges. Several people testified, including Lieutenant Tracy and the chief. At least, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13 exhibits were marked and considered by the hearing officer, not only during the course of the hearing, but in rendering his decision. So that hearing had two officers sworn under oath give testimony. There was a decision and a recommendation by the hearing officer, which I am not going to discuss. That is my factual summary that I'm willing to give to you at this point, in deliberation. So, here we are asking if you have any questions of me, or of the chief, or Mr. Gallantucci. Counselor? Anyone?
Chief, have one even a police officer in Angler Cliff?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I have to swear to you.
Which one do I?
You, we can raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth. I don't, but we're going to, if you want to
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it. Sorry. Give it to you.
I can ask this question to Mr. Gallantucci, you could just show your
It would be easier, I think it's 40 years, but it's in the hearing
It's in the hearing officer's report. 41 years?
41 years.
Okay.
And thank you, Ed.
Okay. Apologize, but we'll put him on the row if he's going to answer anything. All right, anyone else? Thank you, Lizette, we passed, we passed all the chief. But just leave that there on that table in case we need to
I have a question for you, borough attorney.
Yes, yes.
So you have mentioned that this was on the agenda back in November 2017.
November 9th.
November 9th, 2017, on the agenda for a closed session discussion.
Right.
But you mentioned tonight that it was never discussed.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're already in March, so what happened between November and March? Why is this coming up now?
Well
Not in December, not in January, not in February, why now?
I agree, and that's probably a housekeeping question that has nothing to do with what we're doing with the chief?
Excuse us.
Excuse me.
You're a victor.
Excuse me. So what happened was, various litigations, various items on your agenda, your reward meeting, generally you don't do anything of significance, you try not to do anything of significance at the end of a calendar year, that's a standard municipal practice. We could have done it sooner, we brought it to you as soon as we could on this agenda. If there's an objection about delay, I'm sure that Mr. Gallantucci will raise it with the Superior Court when he goes on appeal.
I'm hoping that won't happen.
Okay.
What, go ahead.
Well, if you have to go on appeal. So, you know, I don't particularly remember why, I do remember that it was definitely premature to put it on the agenda for November, because you will recall, we had a spate of serious bunch of litigation filed right before the election, and at that meeting, we had a zillion appointments being made for lawyers for multiple litigations, and we also had a very long closed session. So, I'm not even certain whether we just pulled the matter, or we just forgot about it.
Sounds like somebody dropped the ball.
I mean, both.
A rice notice was never
And then the rice notice was done, which sort of leads me to think
And the rice notice wasn't served.
Right. Which sort of leads me to believe that, at the last moment, I said, you know, we had only gotten the report like a day or two before this, right? It's dated November 6th. We get it, we put it on November 7th, I think it was a mistake to put it on, I would have sent rice notice. So I'm not even sure how it came to be, but that's the way it went, and it's three months, it's less than three months that we're here today. So I think that we're trying to act in good faith in all respects. Do you have any other questions so far, Councilwoman? Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right. And I told you, council members, you can ask questions of Chief Chiotti or his attorney. Is there anything further, or we'll just close down that part? Okay. Do you want to have, this is your opportunity now to speak. Mr. Gallantucci, I've asked you, if you're not going to have, if you're going to have your time to speak, then I have to put him on the row. If not, it's no problem, and you are objecting, for the record, you are objecting to the intent of the council on my advice to deliberate in closed session in the future, you and I will talk about it.
I frankly don't understand why they can't deliberate tonight, after they heard our short order.
Okay, and I'll tell you why. We had a disagreement of legal opinion as to whether or not we could do the deliberations on the same night as the rice notice, and properly keep your client out at that point. So what I decided and determined was, because he asked for an open public hearing, I had not informed you that it was our intent to do deliberations in private under the Open Public Meetings Act.
As far as I'm concerned, you don't do that, after we're done, that's all.
Okay, so we're set to not do it tonight, we're going to do it on April 11th. You don't necessarily have to come, there is not going to be another rice notice, and it will be decided in closed session, I mean deliberated in closed session, decided on the record, and I'll note for the record that it's now 11:50, so we're not going to undertake deliberations at that, at this time. Do you have anything you would like to say strictly on the improper dissemination of materials?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Start out with your, your hearing officer was a former partner of the prosecutor that presented the case. That was raised, that issue was raised during the course of the hearing. It's my understanding that it was more of a social relationship, because either the prosecutor introduced the hearing officer to his wife, but there was something going on there that was raised during the course of the hearing. That's number one. Number two, 28, call in 14-118, provides that a municipality gives to the mayor and council the right to make an appointment of an appropriate authority. An appropriate authority is a defined term. Not anyone can be an appropriate authority. In Angler Cliff, what we have is a borough ordinance that says, an appropriate authority is the mayor and council as a whole. So it's not just one person, or two, or three, or an executive, or anything else. That's number one. So this should may have been issued by the hearing officer, who is referenced, who has had the relationship with the prosecutor. In Angler Cliff, that ordinance says that the whole, the whole council, mayor and council, shall act as the appropriate authority. In this particular case, the complaint signed was signed by the mayor, the mayor only. Now, first of all, that excludes him, he's disqualified, there's no way in our rule of law that somebody can charge a person and then act as their judge. That's somewhere else, that's grocery chain, that's somewhere else. So that's number one.
Go ahead, go ahead. Just get your pen.
That's other one. The mayor didn't have the right to sign it, and even if he did sign it, he should not act in this case.
That's okay. I'm not going to
I'm sorry. I apologize.
He should not act in this case as a judge. I would encourage you to read all of the testimony, there is a transcript, and the municipality has a copy of the transcript that's available for you to read, that's available to see what the witnesses said, so that you can make a determination as to what happened during the course of that hearing. After you have that, you can receive documents, get all of the documents that have been submitted. Don't let anybody cut you short and redact, there's not going to be a redaction, because that redaction is going to go to court. We're not going to have any of that. It's an open hearing, and we want an open hearing, because we don't want anyone to fall round. This is much too serious. This is 41 years as a police officer, it's serious, and that's how it has to be handled. So that's what I have to say about the general case, the junior police academy case. Everything addressed in that subject letter. The letter is about something that occurred at a meeting on April 13th, 2016. That particular case, it was gone since 2016. In a newspaper, reported about it in June of 2016.
Excuse me.
And the newspaper.
Excuse me, are you supplementing the record now or not?
Read the transcript.
Okay, okay.
No, he's just
No.
No, it's not funny, guys, and if you want to laugh, you have to leave, because this is a serious matter, okay? It affects all of you.
And I appreciate that.
And what I want is to understand, he is supplementing it.
Okay.
Right? He is supplementing the record. He is.
A newspaper
Did you introduce, and was a newspaper article accepted by the hearing officer?
Yes.
Where is it listed on the exhibit list?
Well, you're going to have to go to my summation for that.
Okay, it's not in exhibit, do not
I'm not sure if he has it. Pardon me?
Do not, this is not, this is not to discuss newspaper articles, so
No, no, no.
No, no, that's not registered, that is not registered.
Okay.
I said, a newspaper article appeared that went into evidence on June 26th.
Okay, I'm sorry, there is no June 26th newspaper article in evidence here.
I'm sorry, June 27th.
Where do you say
Not the article, the testimony was introduced. Testimony was introduced.
Sir
Yes.
The rules of this hearing today are not to add new things.
That's not new.
Okay, you are talking about a newspaper article that does not appear to be in exhibit, so talk about something that was already in the hearing, you can't expand beyond the hearing.
Not only did it appear in this newspaper article, but there was an Oprah request that was satisfied, and that Oprah request also came out before the chief got anywhere involved with that letter. Now, that letter was a letter that, you received a phone call from a former mayor who was very interested in the junior police academy. Because of that, because of that position with the junior police academy, he contacted him, and gave him a copy of the letter. So what happened in this case is the former mayor read the letter, that was it.
Okay. Mr. Gallantucci, you're just repeating what is already in the record before the hearing officer?
When you said that, I'm supposed to be talking about what was before the hearing
No, I respect, I respect what you're trying to do, but this has already been litigated. We are here to make a decision on the record below, and you want to supplement the record below. This is not an opportunity for a full closing argument, or rehashing what you already said that has already been decided by the hearing officer in his recommendations. I think that you're going too far afield, and you want to repeat what you
I'm talking about the issue in the case. The hearing lasted much longer than an hour.
I understand.
And I'm saying that what happened was, there was a newspaper article that came out.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two was Oprah that came out. Number three, there was a letter that was presented to the former mayor about what had happened in this case.
Yes.
That's what happened.
Okay, thank you very much. That is a repeat of what is already in the record and in the hearing officer's decision, and the council will be given the transcripts, should the council determine that they want them, and you can read the evidence hearing.
Now, in that particular matter, and I'm getting ready to close it out, that's pretty much about it.
Okay.
But that particular case, the hearing officer wasn't so convinced, he said that it was going to be a recommendation of no imposition except for telling the chief that he shouldn't do that.
Okay.
That's what the penalty was.
I understand, and that is what the recommendation is
That's not accurate.
What's accurate?
Hold on, and we are not going to discuss
Are these people going
Listen, you've got to stop waving that finger around, because the last time you were in here was a problem.
Are these people going to do that? But they can eat the world.
You know what?
In the world.
Okay. Mayor, let me just guide
He's not being accurate, he's trying to influence the governing body, the appropriate authority.
Okay.
Because they
But wrong
Mayor, let, let, let me just guide-
He's not being accurate. He's trying to influence the governing body with appropriate authority.
Okay.
But wrongfully, 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 wrongfully.
Wrongfully? I feel like this.
Mr. Gallantucci, please, and mayor, just, I will, I'm going to go back.
We have a history, if you can't tell. The last time you was here, you were swinging at me.
Okay.
What?
Mr. Gallantucci.
That, that for the record, I presume?
That was the 2016. You stood right here, and you were swinging.
I swung at you?
You were swinging that finger.
I swung at you?
Yeah, this is about you also, sir.
All right, you too, all right.
I swung at you.
Okay. Mr. Gallantucci.
That's a serious matter.
Let's, let's, let's go forward.
There is film.
I, 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 I just want to address some of the commentary made, are you done, sir?
I am.
Okay. First off, mayor and council, as I previously have counseled you, the first part of Mr. Gallantucci's response with respect to an alleged conflict of the hearing officer and with, with respect to the signing of the charges by the appropriate authority, those are legal issues. They were raised by the parties, briefed by the parties, and decided by the hearing officer. You have no authority to change the hearing officer's decision on that. As a matter of fact, I have been told, and I read through these things several weeks ago, but that the, the possibility of a conflict was this, the hearing officer 30 years ago used to work with the labor attorney in office for a certain period of time. Mr. Gallantucci waived that conflict during the hearings on these cases. So whether or not that is reserved for a superior court appeal, if one is done, is an issue. They can raise that in a superior court appeal, they cannot raise it here because you have no authority to change the hearing officer's legal rulings.
So why is he raising it now?
Because he desires to.
Wrongfully.
Uh, mayor, what I'm telling you is I'm counseling the mayor and council. He, he can raise it, he may or may not be appropriately characterizing it, you cannot change the decisions made by the hearing officer. Who found that, that there was a waiver of the conflict of interest, and who found that under both the state statute and the borough code, the mayor had the right to sign the charges? In 48-14-118, which is commonly called the Chief Bill of Rights, there are whole sections in there about your rights, and one of those sections detailed the executive authority over the discipline of police officers, over the exam, I think it says examination of the performance of officers. There is a legitimate legal basis for the mayor having signed the charges, and the hearing officer made that ruling. That is the end of that issue, so let's not waste our time.
If I could just refer to page 31, you asked me for a reference as to the newspaper article.
Okay, very good, we, we, thank you for putting that up. I didn't itemize every transcript matter, okay? Mayor and council, we, I, I believe we are done, is there anything further?
On this particular one?
On this particular one.
And I would just add that I did not attend any of that hearing.
That's correct, I know that. And did any council member attend any of the hearings? I don't think so. Okay, so, uh, we should adjourn on this particular matter. I am directing or requesting that the record reflect that we will deliberate on this unless that decision is changed by me from some legal citation that I've received from council. We will carry this motion, this matter until closed session on April 11th.
You're gonna table it, table the motion.
Table, table the hearing.
The hearing.
I just wanted to make the record clear that we're not closing it. We are keeping it open for deliberation at the next available closed session, April 11th, okay?
Mr. Gallantucci, that, that doesn't foreclose me for the second.
No, no, we're doing the second matter separately. Uh, hold on. Did we, uh, did we on the record have notate, I will notate, Councilwoman McMorro is refused on charge number two as well, all right, and she remains out of the room. Uh, okay, now we come to charge number two, and again, my Chi Chi, this matter is about a failure to investigate with respect to a citizen complaint. Now, I have been, we received a request for recusal as to Councilman Aversa, and, and, Councilwoman Ellen Park, no, I'm just saying, his sign says DMV Councilman there. So, okay, anyway, I'm sorry, I diverted for a minute there. It says DMV Councilman on his, on his foot, okay. Uh, we received a request from a citizen for recusal of Ellen and Ed, and Ellen asked me for a written opinion on what my analysis was, and I did provide that. There was some back and forth out of respect for Ellen and Ed, and generally, I don't talk about conflicts of interest in public. You know, you know, and Ed, you called me, Ellen, I asked you to call me, you didn't call me, but, you know, I think we said enough in writing, frankly. Uh, I'm not asking for your opinion or input on this, my decision was that there is a conflict of interest for you, Ellen, and I respectfully ask, will you be refusing?
I will not be refusing.
Okay, so you are going to disregard my advice?
Correct.
And you are going to participate in vote?
Correct.
Do you understand that you risk personal consequences as to yourself?
Personal consequences?
Yes.
If you say so, I am worried.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you, you're doing something against my-
I sought counsel.
I understand.
There's no counsel, and I don't wanna go into details about your legal opinion.
It's not quite.
But there's nothing in there that cites otherwise, and so I, there's no conflict.
Okay. Um, I disagree, and I strongly believe that you are making an incorrect decision, and you are putting the borough at risk, and this matter at risk by participating. And you know the details, the request, the citizen, is the involved victim or witness has to charge number two for Chi Chiapi. This is a direct issue, she raised, direct thing that occurred. I'm not gonna say anything further at this point, okay? Uh, Councilman Aversa, Councilman Aversa, will you be retaking my advice and recusing?
Well, your, your advice is a little conflicting to me, so after my conversation with you-
Yes.
-I think I'm not conflicted, so I'm, I'm, I think I, and I don't believe I am, so I'm okay.
Okay, so let me ask you, do you understand everything that I said? And you understand, of course you do, I know you did, because we talked about it. You understand that my opinion with respect to you is that there was an appearance of impropriety which has the same effect as an actual conflict of interest, it's sort of less than a fault kind of.
I understand, I-
I'm just making a reference.
Yeah, because I don't, you didn't make it clear enough to me as a layperson to see really any conflict why, because this is not a matter about the person you spoke about, this is, to me, and this is the way you explain it to me.
Yes.
This is a matter about the chief, and a reprimand about the chief, I have no conflict with this, this.
Okay, well-
I have no conflict whatsoever.
I understand.
Like you might say about the patch and, and, there's no conflict.
Okay.
I, so, so that's who the issue is, is about.
Okay, that's your perception, and of course, though, what you do have to consider, and what you will be considering as we go forward, is in fact the testimony of the citizen that made the complaint about conflict of interest. She is the citizen who testified before the hearing officer, and she is the witness testimony that the hearing officer had along with others at that hearing that he relied upon in making the decision. So the fact is, you can't ignore that you're only dealing with the chief when in fact your basis for modifying, accepting, or rejecting the hearing officer's decision has to take into consideration the complainant in that matter. So that being said, I understand what the two of you are doing, again, for your purposes.
I can't speak for myself.
No, 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 she, she, you didn't change your mind, right?
I can make my own decision.
Okay, and you didn't change your mind, right?
No.
Okay.
Will you provide the letter and your, whatever the legal opinion was?
No, I will not.
That's privileged.
It's absolutely privileged and confidential.
It's pretty basic.
And you know what, if it comes to a legal argument, or there's another lawsuit, some attorney will be appointed, and whether or not that memo gets released will be subject to an input camera or-
Do you want to knock?
Oh, no, but they have it, they have it. No one else, Councilman Aversa and Councilwoman Park have it.
The other mayor?
No, absolutely not, he was not consulted in any way with respect to that. Uh, I did a strict fact review of the facts that are in paperwork, in the file, and on the record of other council meetings. And there is a transcript, these are reliable sources, you can read, you can go through the media.
Are you still talking about it?
I'm talking about the conflict.
Okay.
Okay?
I've already said what-
So it's over and done, it's over and done, they decided they're, they're gonna disregard. Uh, I am going to speak briefly about the facts, and then we're gonna go through what we did previously before. This charge is a charge of a failure to investigate a complaint made by a citizen, Lauren Eastwood, with respect to an action which occurred during a council meeting. The complaint had to do with intimidation and/or sort of physical invading of space by former mayor Parisi to Lauren Eastwood in an open public meeting. At that time, Lauren Eastwood went to the police department and made a complaint. The complaint was initially investigated by the police department, but in a very cursory way, and then nothing was communicated to Lauren Eastwood. Lauren Eastwood wrote another letter making an inquiry, she wrote another letter making an inquiry, and she, I think she worked, made a fourth letter making an inquiry. One came to the borough council, and to a couple of other people. In any event, the charge was that the manner which the chief did not supervise his officers as to the investigation that should have ensued when in fact a citizen makes a complaint over the counter. We've not, he wasn't charged with, you didn't find charges should be sustained or not, it was a failure to investigate, and, and that was what was presented in the charge, that was what was looked at by the VCPO, that was what was looked at with the mayor, and what the mayor signed, and that was what was heard by the hearing officer in this case. The witnesses were, during the hearing on February 21st, the witnesses were Lauren Eastwood, Chief Michael Chiapi, and retired Captain Daniel Morrison. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There were 10 marked exhibits in that matter, and let me see, so that I can actually be accurate. First was the initial, initial statement by Ms. Eastwood, and then there were three follow-up letters, and, uh, there, the, the, the hearing officer had the two-page investigative report, there was a transcript of a video, there was a video of the council meeting where the, the alleged action happened, and a supplemental report of Lieutenant Morrison. And then, of course, the witnesses testified, the hearing officer made a decision, and you know what the result of that decision was, not a decision, a recommendation, the mayor's recommendation. So that is what is before you, and you will receive the transcript before the next meeting, so then you can properly deliberate based upon the actual witness testimony. That being said, a home of the lines, Mr. Gallantucci, please do not supplement the record, please come, please keep your comments to argument rather than legal issues that may have been raised and decided by the hearing officer, because it just takes up more time tonight. Thank you, sir.
What was in May of 2013? Uh, there, there was a hearing of the mayor and council, a complaint was made by Ms. Eastwood, and Ms. Eastwood, at the end of the meeting, went out to the police station, and she wanted to sign a, a statement. She didn't want to sign a complaint, she wanted to sign a statement. She was called in, she wrote out her statement, she was interviewed. The next day, the lieutenant interviewed her, the lieutenant took a look at the, what happened with respect to the video, they got the video so they could make sure what happened, because the video sometimes propels when people are exaggerating. So that's what they did in this case, and they looked at it, they then gave it to the chief. The chief read the report of the lieutenant, he read the statement of Lauren, and he read the, I guess it was the supplemental report, because what happened was that she was asked if she wanted to sign a complaint. She said no. That was the end of it. Her complaint was that there were 25, 30 people in the courtroom, you didn't interview all those people. So what? She didn't even want to sign a complaint, and then send the police officers out to be 25 or 30 interviews, where there's not even a complaint. It makes no sense. She waited until a new mayor and council came on board, and then signed a complaint about a failure to investigate. During that period of time, there were four letters. She sent a letter to the chief, I think she sent a second letter to the chief, she sent a letter to the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, she sent one to the Attorney General's Office, she sent one to the mayor and council. Nobody, nobody responded to it, but this man, this hearing officer, who has this relationship with a prosecutor, indicated that he made a finding-
He waived it.
...for two days.
That was waived, right?
One of which was-
Yes, that was waived.
That was waived.
Mr. Gallantucci, please don't repeat the arguments of, of what we saw raised, and please don't raise the legal issues that were decided by-
What legal issues? What did you sum up?
We just said something about the conflict of interest, we waived that at the hearing below.
No, I waived at the hearing below so that there's no misunderstanding anymore. At the beginning-
What's a waiver, Emery? A waiver's a waiver.
The prosecutor came to me and said that there was a relationship between the two of them.
And you accepted that.
I, I talked to the chief, and I accepted it.
Right.
As that hearing went-
And you proceeded to excuse him.
I excuse me.
Go ahead.
As that hearing went on, this guy revealed not only this relationship in business, but also that they had a social relationship, were willing to use the other to their wife.
And when did that occur? How many times? Once?
It's, you know, I thought you read the reports.
I did.
Take a look, it's in there.
Okay, but he made a ruling on it, right? You waived it?
No, he didn't. He made a ruling on the original recusal, not on the second.
Bob, with all due respect-
Yes.
-this body can't change the legal rulings, let's move on to that one.
They can do whatever they want with this.
No, they cannot change the legal rulings.
You can't box these people.
I did the research, they can't change the legal rulings.
Once, once this guy, once the hearing officer saw what happened in this case, he said, well, maybe, maybe two days, but I'll suspend one day, and I'll have to serve one day.
Okay, so, so that's what you say occurs during the hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, but we do have a decision that varies from that, correct? Okay, so we, we agreed that we weren't going to discuss what the particular discipline is, so with all due respect, are you finished?
Let me tell you something, I didn't agree that I was gonna talk about-
Yeah, that's okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with my-
But you also can't change it.
Right.
I mean, you're just trying to change it, and I understand you're, you're trying to change what actually happened in that hearing, in the report. I mean, again, you know, facts are better than dreams, right? So we have facts to worry about.
I doubt you were having a genius someone back there before.
Okay, so, I'm comfortable with the limitations and restrictions that I've stated, and the parameters of what my client, the borough-
That's fine.
-Englewood Cliffs.
Okay.
It can be debated, or you can pay us for later.
I've said what I need to say.
Now-
We're not allowed to change whatever-
You're not allowed to change-
You said we could do nothing-
Modify it.
Modify it or-
No, 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 hold on.
Don't confuse me.
I'm not confusing you, I talk very plain, I think, and I tried to, okay?
But I, now, do it three times, it just can't change anything.
You cannot change legal decisions and rulings made by the hearing officer. You will decide with respect to his recommendation as to discipline, whether you want to accept it, reject it, or modify it, the end result, not how they got there. The end result, not how they got there.
This is forty-one years of, of, of time. Now, we're talking about a slap on the wrist, a reprimand, this is all about.
I understand.
Can I make a motion to dismiss all this?
No. 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 We're doing good. We're doing good so far.
Ed, I understand that you owe your, your council seat to these people, but really, you have a conflict.
Ed, get it up.
That's not fair.
Ed.
You know what? It's the truth.
Time out, please.
You haven't learned the truth for years, I can tell.
Got it, got it.
Look at you.
Hold on, Mayor, please. We want a clear record for transferred purposes, please.
Please.
Councilman Aversa, we must deliberate. Should you choose to make a motion after the deliberation or should there be a motion by anyone?
We're not done yet, there's more.
We're going to deliberate at another time.
All right, so-
You don't listen to me.
So is he done?
I am done and he is done.
All right.
We, we-
Oh, sorry.
I happen to be done too, but if you want to make a motion for dismissal, there's nothing to stop.
Not here.
Or anywhere.
No, not now. They have to deliberate. You can't do that.
Well, first of all-
Wait a minute.
Looks like he shouldn't be speaking to your clients. These are your clients. He has a client, okay? Let's be clear about this.
All right. Let's be clear. Hold on a second. Let's be clear. This is akin to a hearing before an administrative body where witnesses are sworn and testimony is taken. That happened already. Mr. Gallantucci is addressing questions raised by new council members. I have given him the right to do that.
So because, because he doesn't swear in a Bible, he gets to change all of that?
No, no, no. He is an officer of the court. Mr. Gallantucci is an officer of the court.
Right, but he's changing things that someone-
I understand. No, no, no.
About lawyers and how lawyers are supposed to know that.
Mayor, I hear what you're saying and you may think, excuse me, you may think that I'm on the side of him or him or him. And I'm not against him and I'm not for him. My purpose here is to give the, the Chi Chiapi notice and an opportunity to be heard in a due process manner. His lawyer is entitled to put forth what I've, what he's had so far.
That's fine, but he's not entitled to change things.
No, and that, but that comes to, that will come in deliberations. If you have a point we want to raise about anything we said or anything I said, and again, I just tried to characterize the facts briefly, I am not going to be presenting that you should do this or you should do that in closed session. It is not my role. My role is to guide you. It is not my role to make a recommendation of what you are going to do. We're going to discuss it in closed session.
All right, let's do that.
In appropriate deliberations.
Are you finished?
I'm done.
And is he done?
Wait, no. Question from the, just question.
I guess whenever, do you have a copy of the transcript, correct?
Yes.
Can I get a copy, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Most certainly can. Even though I disagree with your decision not to refuse, I am going to give that to you.
I know some question about that. Will, will they have enough time? In other words, I think with some time, they get paperwork too late.
No, no, that's the tran- that's what I'm writing.
No, actually, what you didn't hear correctly is they get it, they just go reading.
Uh, I can, I will inform you, I'm not busy copying you on my correspondence and my time, but I will inform you of what is set to then and when.
That's correct.
Okay. I believe in cooperation.
That's fine.
This, just so you know, this is, the purpose of this is for you guys to be in-
And again, I did not attend a second hearing either.
Yeah, correct. Uh, you're good?
I'm good, sir.
Uh, Mayor, I'm done. That's adjourned. Would we return?
We need to get Carol in here to adjourn.
Sir? Thank you. Okay.
We need to get Carol in here.
Yeah. I think she might be leaving. Carol, we need to get her on.
All right, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
All right. Just a moment.
Seconds. On favor?
Aye.
On favor? Oh, yeah. All right, share the question, Amber. Amber. Amber.
Yes. You have a question on the agenda that you got to reopen?
All right, can I have a motion to reopen?
Hold on. Excuse me. Go ahead.
No, you got to reopen. You got to reopen.
Reopen.
Carol moves, Mark second. On favor?
Aye.
Um, I just want to ask a question for the record. I stayed in that room alone. No one, did anybody else on the court?
No one else refused?
Oh, no.
Get a record with me.
Okay. My question to you was the Borough Attorney. Excuse me, what do you mean?